Want to call this April 29th meeting of the Special Flood Board to Order. During this next interval, we have time for any member of the public to speak to anything not on the agenda. If anything is not on the agenda, it will be addressed. So this is really for anything not on the agenda.
So we want to make comments regarding the master plan?
Oh yeah, no, the master plan is the agenda. Okay. So approval of the Action Minutes for December 2023?
I'll move.
Second. All in favor? Approved. Now we're going in for what everybody's here for is the special meeting presentations. And as Chair of the Board on behalf of the Flood Board, I really want to thank the town of Cortomadera, our past and present city town manager, DPW, and council and engineering for all they've done with this, particularly putting together the consultants that I think have given us a tremendous amount of information on which to make decisions going forward over the next two or three decades. So on behalf of the Flood Board, I thank you for that. I think it's done a great service to the town. And now I'll turn it over to you for the master plan.
Okay, so yeah, as mentioned, tonight, we're going to be presenting the draft storm drain master plan and the shoreline adaptation engagement effort. Master Plan has been two years in the work and you know, we have the draft document right now. So we're getting close to the end of the process. You know, the next steps will be to take the comments, rework the draft, and then take the final to council to get reviewed and approved by them. So with that, I'm going to pass it off. Yeah, so Robin Lee with Chaffewillers here to, you know, present the draft plan. So take your way. Are you ready?
All right. My name is Robin Lee. I'm a Senior Project Manager at Chaffewillers. I have close to two decades in stormwater water resource engineering. And so I'm here to present the draft final and it's very exciting to have standing room only. It's not often that we have so many interested people in stormwater, which is what I do. So I'm very excited. And I also did hear a comment about how long the document was. And I, and I do know that it is a lengthy document and I'll talk a little bit about this. But this isn't draft final. We're here to hear your comments today. And then ultimately, what I'd really like to do is put together what I would call a technical executive summary. So it's a very condensed shortened digestible standalone document so that this document reads a little bit easier. But we'd really like to hear any comments and feedbacks tonight so we can push this to final and put together a nice executive summary. So the study objectives of this master plan are multifaceted. We really are identifying the financial needs first and foremost, prioritizing projects and showing what those dollar needs are. And they're kind of into two different buckets. One is condition related and the other one is conveyance or capacity related. So I'll discuss these a little bit more detail as well. And we're preparing a 10-year plan for the town, so working really closely with RJ and Chris as to what are the next 10 years looking like for the town's financial needs? And specifically, what are those projects? And then throughout the project and the study, we've been updating electronic data. So we're kind of trying to move from paper maps from some of the historical data that goes back to 1985 when we're talking about settlement and putting it into electronic data where we can map it and create more figures to really get visuals of what's going on. So the study started with review of the existing information. We also reviewed the previous master plan back from 2006, 2007. And then we went in the field and we did investigations and that is really collecting data, but also looking at conditions. So we're doing field investigations. Either full mounted GoPro cameras or CCTVs taking videos. Then we're preparing the hydrologic and hydraulic model that analyzes the conveyance capacity of the system. And then we're coming up with recommendations to improve both condition and the conveyance capacity. And so we come up with these recommendations and projects. We put it into a report that becomes a plan looking forward for the next 10 years. And then we also have appendices which kind of look out further long-term than just the 10 years that's in the body of the report and ultimately submitting a big hard drive with updated electronic data. And this is the sort of spoiler. So this is, this is the dollar amount that comes out of the master plan into each different bucket. We have very high, high, medium, and low costs. And I know that it becomes quite a shock to see these million dollar numbers, but that is not uncommon because storm drain systems are aging. Some of the pipes are metal pipes and corroding. I'll talk a little bit about that. And then these pipes were put in the ground when the town first developed. And so some of them are not at the conveyance capacity. So while the numbers are large, we do have several other master plans and we don't see it as being drastically different than other jurisdiction needs. So here's an overview of the drainage system. There are several lagoons. The pump stations are in those green squares and the red squares represent gate structures. And then basically the red are the closed conduits or pipes and the blue lines are the open channels or ditches or canals. This is the approximate study area. We broke it down into specific basins based on primarily where they outfall. So whether they outfall to a lagoon or whether they're outfalling to the larger canals or if they're directly outfalling into the creek. So we analyze the storm drain system on a 24-hour rainfall pattern. And we have two different design standards. We have the 10-year storm event, which is used for the majority of the system. And that's the storm event that has a 10% chance of occurring. And then we put a relatively high tide, which I'll talk a little bit about the tide. And we also have a 25-year storm event, which is also a 24-hour duration. And that's what we're looking at for the pump stations. Cause those are basically the very outlet point of most of the drainage areas or watershed. So we're looking at a slightly larger storm event. And as I'm reading this, I'm realizing that they don't, the 25-year actually has a 4% chance of occurring. 25%, sorry. All right. So the 10-year storm and the 25-year storm rainfall pattern is based off of what we call a design storm. And it uses the 2005, 2006 New Year's Eve storm. And it takes that pattern and tries to basically replicate through rainfall a known discharge in a creek. So we would take Cortomadera Deer Creek. And we are trying to put a rainfall event that produces a 10-year discharge in a creek. That is what it meant by a design storm. So it's not an actual storm event. It is a hypothetical storm that we use in our model to produce what we believe is the 10-year or the 25-year runoff. And so these are the history of drainage issues that we kind of looked at. And the October 2021 storm, we took into account in the sense that that storm had about a foot of storm surge on the tide with that event occurred. And we know that there are several areas in the town where the tide really drives the conveyance capacity of the system. So a typical standard would be to use a mean high-high water tide. And we took the October 2021 storm and we brought that mean high-high water a little bit higher to sort of match what we saw in the 2021 event. So in any master plan, we really start with the known or suspected drainage issues. We did a walk of the watershed with engineering and maintenance staff. And we looked at the known drainage issues. And then we basically put our model together to see if the model shows issues at these locations. And sometimes they are conveyance related and then other locations are condition related. So we kind of go through those in the report with the goal of addressing the issues that we're seeing. And then we also have all of the data that was provided with us by the town. And like I said, we went out in the field and collected additional data to sort of make sure that we had the information needed for our hydraulic model. And we updated that what's called GIS data. So it's used, you can pull into a map. You can visually and spatially see where it is. And then we also are using the 2019 county LiDAR data, which is pretty good. Came out in 2020 and gives us basically the surface elevation of the watershed. And then this is a more detailed look into the storm drain infrastructure. Again, we have, we have nodes which are basically catch basins or manhole. They're the connection points of pipes. And there's close to five miles of pipes and open channel system. We were also using hydrologic soil group. It allows us to estimate how much runoff is produced by the soil. So a soil type A is represented by mostly sandy and then you get a lot higher infiltration. And a soil type D, which you can see is most of the town in the lower elevations is your more clay or bay mud, produces more runoff because there's less infiltration capacity of the soils. And then the land use information is primarily brought into our model so that we can analyze the sort of percent impervious over the surfaces, which also gives us the information of how much our catchments or watersheds are going to be producing runoff versus water or rainfall landing onto the courteous landscaped areas and infiltrating in. We're going to go through a little bit about our data collection. We did top side field data collections with a GoPro mounted on a pole so that we could collect pictures of pipes. So you can see on the right-hand side, I mentioned some of the town has corrugated metal pipes that are at the age, at the end of their useful life. So you can see that the invert or the bottom of the pipe has been corroded out. So this would be what we would put in as a condition-related project, meaning that the pipe needs to be repaired, replaced, so that it is a full pipe and we don't have that corroded invert. So we can do lots of that from our pole-mounted GoPro. We can get about 50 feet into the pipe. Other areas where they were either larger pipes or harder to access or we had suspicion of known issues or weren't entirely sure how the infrastructure connected underground, even based on as-built, we went in with a CCTV camera. So these cameras can go through the pipes. And then the vendor who provides us with these videos also provides us with a profile plot of the pipe. And then just so that I'm not boring everyone, I did put in a video here, which we are not going to watch the whole thing. But this will show you a typical corrugated metal pipe. And then this is the video that we get. Let's stay straight in themselves. No. Here we go. So it might not render as quickly through the pipe here, but you can see this is a corrugated metal pipe. It has some debris and sediment on the bottom, but the pipe is still there. So this is a pipe that we might recommend blining, which is a way of preventing the pipe from failing down the road. All right. And then we have, we have the lagoons surveyed. We're done by a drone to capture the symmetry of the, of the lagoons. And this was done in October when the lagoons were lowered. So we got as much of the symmetry as possible. And I believe I put in a video here. This is the drone that we sent up into the sky. I believe, Robert, I met you one day while we were actually sending the drone up.
Impressive.
It is, it was pretty fun to watch. And this is actually, we have a surveying firm that does this. Unfortunately, I am not a drone driver or pilot. But this is the big drone and it basically goes up in the air and it's kind of like a lawnmower back and forth. And it collects images of the system, which also collects elevations. So the results of that are we have these 3D simulations where you can go into AutoCAD 3D and you can see a flyover of the data that was captured. And this data then goes into making contours and topography of these lagoons. And there's also 3D images that are produced. And we also had the high canal and low canal included in that survey. We also did a separate pump station and gate assessment specifically on the equipment themselves and the pumps. And this also included a corrosion investigation. As we all know, metal and saltwater does definitely have issues. So we had a consultant go out and specifically look at the corrosion protection system that are in place and make recommendations on upgrades to those. Then we also collected spot elevations at certain locations that were identified by town staff so that they can be used in the future for future settlement, settlement analysis. And then we're also working with Miller Pacific. They are studying the settlement in the Mariner Cove, Marina Village, and Marina Estates neighborhoods in the low-lying area. And we were provided these hard paper maps that show elevations from 1985 to 2006. And then we went back out and collected elevation on these locations and then put them into electronic data so that now we can basically create maps of the different spot elevations and locations that you can see from 1985, 2006, 2024, which then gives us the ability to produce contour maps and heat maps such as this one, which shows basically the green is areas where Miller Pacific believes that based on the thickness of the bay mud, that the settlement has, has reached the end. And as you get closer to the oranges and red, there's an estimated 0.6 additional feet of settlement in the next 10 years. And then we can also take those out to 100 years. And again, so now the red, orangey areas, one and a half to two more feet of settlement over the next 100 years. We also can take those sea level rise and the settlement. So as we know, the tides are going up while the ground is going down. So what is represented here is sea level rise on top of a mean high-high water tide, which is about an elevation six. And the ground, the ground elevations that are less than that. And that's what is represented in pink. Now the blue is the additional areas that are lower than a mean high-high tide if you include settlement on top of this sea level rise. So you see that there's areas in pink and on the left-hand side, that is on a 10-year horizon with half a foot of sea level rise. And on the right-hand side, that's a 30-year horizon with about a foot of sea level rise. So it's basically areas below mean high-high water. I'm going to go quickly, but this is our modeling methodology. This is how we analyze how much runoff is produced from the rain and then how it is conveyed in the system. And when we use that to identify locations in the system that are undersized. And specifically, we're talking about those 10-year and 25-year events with a 10% chance or the 4% chance, which is the 4% every year, a 10% every year. So first, when we start with our hydrologic model, we have rainfall, which I discussed, we have a 24-hour pattern of rainfall, which it landed on those subcatchments, which we take the soil and the land use. And that presents, represents a flow. And that flow comes off those subcatchments, is conveyed into a pipe or a closed conduit or an open channel such as a ditch or a canal. And then in most cases, they're discharged into a lagoon, which is then pumped out into the bay. So this is the general scenario of what is being represented by our, what we call an H and H hydrologic, hydraulic model. And this is showing you all those little black polygons are basically what was just represented. That routine is being run, the rainfall on all these little subcatchments and then into the pipes to the lagoons and to the pump stations. These are the rainfall patterns. So for a 10-year storm, we have about 6.6 inches of rainfall over the course of a day. And for a 25-year storm, we have about eight inches of rainfall over the course of a day. This is the tide cycle development, which I explained where a typical standard is looking at a mean higher high water. A tide cycle has one high hump and then a low and then has a second high, higher hump. So we took a typical mean high-high water tide cycle. And then we took a look at the Richmond Bay tide that occurred during 2021 and we bumped it up. So you'll see here, the mean high-high water in Cortomadera is 6.1. And then we pushed that up based on looking at the 2021 storm surge was actually estimated during this storm that the tide would be about a six-foot tide. And then when you go back and look at measured, was slightly higher than a seven-foot tide. So we, we increased the tide cycle to be a seven-foot tide with our 10-year and 25-year storm events to be conservative, to mimic that 2021 event. This is the, the catchment curve numbers, which represents how much runoff is generated from these catchments. And then basically from a high-level standpoint, the summary of the modeling results. Remember, our model is used to identify conveyance capacity restrictions or limitations. And we find that there are isolated capacity issues, but a lot of the issues are related to the tides. And we're also found finding that the San Clemente pump station is limited in capacity at high tides. So here's the results. This is the sort of heat map where the red dots indicate that you have water ponding greater than a foot. The yellow dots are six inches to a foot. The green dots are less than six inches. This is the 1D model result. So there are a lot of red dots. But what is being done in this is you can see on the left what a 1D result is. It has a cone or a prism on top of the node, which has water going up. Whereas in a 2D, which we do have the blue outlined area in a 2D results, we do have the water allowed to spread over the surface.
That's an important concept, right? So when we say it's one foot or greater, that's the cone. And then if you allow it to open up, it actually would flatten out.
And one other concept to remember too is that generally roads have about a six-inch curve. So what we, we look at here is ideally you've got water ponded no more than six inches. Because if it's bonded six inches, it's contained within the roadway and it's not flooding any houses or structures. So it is important to note that we would anticipate that the yellow and blue dots wouldn't have any impacts to structures. And so this is the results of the, the 1D modeling throughout the, the town. And you can see we prioritize projects based on they're important. So the dark red are very high, red are high. Then we have yellow or medium and the green are low. So these are pipes with known capacity limitations. And, and then also, we also have the pump station on there. And then in the appendix of the report, there are cut sheets for these, the very high project, which allow the town basically to take out, for instance, we had a meeting with Caltrans today and take out these cut sheets and show what the project is with the costs. And then these are all concepts. So then the town can go into more detailed design on these projects. So a lot of these have quite a high contingency, which is based on the nature of their design. They are concepts that need to be fully vetted in a detailed design process. This is the, the 10-year 2D model. So what you see here is low-lying areas of, of water ponding where at a high tide, the storm drain system cannot drain out. And the Marina Estates neighborhood is, is driven by the San Clemente pump station. So that's why you'll see quite a bit of bonded water in Marina Estates. And that area is also very low-lying neighborhood. So in the appendix, we've included alternatives for the Marina Village, Mariner Cove, and Marina Estates neighborhoods for the interior drainage that really relies on long-term shoreline protection. And the reason for that is that there are, there are pipes that do not drain at a high tide, but making a larger pipe doesn't solve the problem if the tide is getting higher. So what needs to happen in, in the low-lying neighborhoods is some sort of long-term strategy is going to drive what those interior drainage projects will look like. So we put in two alternatives and by no means, our study doesn't look at what the shoreline protection should be. It just looks at what interior drainage would look like if different methods of shoreline protection were conducted. So you can see that the, the interior, the pipes and where the pump stations are located are slightly different based on what kind of shoreline protection is done. We also take a look at climate change. We are looking at mid-century or 2050 with about one foot of sea level rise and precipitation increases of about 22% increase. And then how we looked at that is how does that impact the pipes? And we run this on our, what we call our CIP model. So we assume that the system's capacity is upgraded based on the projects we identify. And then we run the sea level rise scenario to see how resilient those projects are. And so you can see that in most cases of the city or the town, sorry, the, the system is resilient based on the projects presented with the exception in the low-lying neighborhoods. And again, that shows how the tides are really driving those projects there. And then after the hydraulic study, which is really looking at the conveyance capacity, we look at the condition of the system. So the good news is that most of the pipe system in the town is what we call RCP, reinforced concrete pipe. And so those have a longer life expectancy than the corrugated metal pipes. So we have about 7% of the system is corrugated metal pipes. And of those, about 50% that we inspected had issues. But with the rest of the system overall, we find 80% is in relatively good condition with 20% needing repair. And then on the maintenance, we find that actually the maintenance is even better. 86% are in good maintenance condition with about 14% needing maintenance. And so these are a couple of images that show what maintenance looks like. And then also on the right, you have what structural repair looks like for, and no surprise, but both of the pipes on the right-hand side are those corrugated metal pipes. So then again, with all this electronic data, we have the ability to overlay. So if you have a condition-related pipe and you also have a capacity-related pipe that are in close proximity, it makes sense to correlate those projects together. So we overlay our condition-related CIPs, which are the red, yellow, greens, overlaid with the blue pipes, which are our capacity-related projects. Same with the operation and maintenance. So then what does all this mean in dollar amounts? And this is the, the entire CIP that is presented in the report. It's not what is intended to be done in the next 10 years. This is everything from low all the way up to the very high priority. So it's got all the, the million dollars. And you can see that the orange is the pump stations, which are really important for the town's drainage system, especially with climate change consideration. And then this is what the very high priority 10-year recommended plan is. So this is what our recommendation is to complete the CIPs, which when we say baseline CIPs, those are the conveyance capacity-related projects. And then the pump stations, we have Shorebird and San Clemente pump stations that represents the orange. And then we have, in the gray, we have near-term pump station rehabs. So those are, in the pump station assessment, we have two crops. We have near-term and full build-out. So for the other pump stations, not Shoreboard and San Clemente, we're recommending near-term upgrades. And then in the 2% yellow, that's our repair and replacement. And then the blue 13% is a CMP replacement program. So proactively inspecting and replacing or So proactively inspecting and replacing or repairing CMP pipes. So getting ahead of having any of them fail, just because what we've seen in the data, based on the ones that we inspected, about 50% needing repair. This would be basically a proactive program of replacing and repairing those corrugated metal pipes. And then within the very high projects, these are what we call the baseline CIPs. Again, these are the capacity conveyance increases. Um, these are the projects, which each one of these has a detailed report summary in the appendix of the report. And then we basically have three different recommendations. Again, I've sort of talked about the bottom one, which is completing the very high priority projects in the baseline, the conveyance capacity increases. And it is basically 29 million. So if you, over the course of 10 years, it's 2.9 million. We understand that's more than what the town is currently spending. So we also have double the existing funding or keep the existing funding. And within each of these three, we identify the projects that can kind of be completed over the course of the next 10 years. There is a chapter on potential revenue sources. Um, we did not go into a detailed financial study. These are basically ways that storm drain um repairs, programs, master plans can be funded. Throughout California, it is challenging because in most places, stormwater is not a utility with a dedicated revenue source like a sewer system. Um, so these are kind of the alternative options from having a dedicated utility funding source um that can be used for getting these master plan projects completed. And then like I spoke in the very beginning, the goal is to have a standalone executive summary that would be easy to digest once we receive all the comments and finalize the report. Um, the report is going to have very long lengthy appendices that kind of cover the more detailed studies. And then all of the electronic supporting data on a hard drive that would be submitted to the town. That is the presentation. Now, you should do questions.
Thank you, Robin. Um, so for it now, we'll turn it back to Chair Bundy. There's questions from floodboard.
Well, I think, uh, I apologize to the audience that the screens have all been taken out. So it makes it much more difficult for you to see. I guess we're starting to transition to the new town hall that'll be open soon. Uh, but if it's okay with the floodboard, I would, uh, think we open it up to the audience. They've, uh, been sitting here and waiting through this. So I would ask you to come up to the podium. You don't need a microphone, uh, but just, uh, identify yourself and where you live. And we're trying to live at this to three minutes. Try to be as pertinent as you can, uh, to elicit, uh, a response, you know, from everybody here. And if you just want to reinforce what somebody else said, just say you agree with this or, you know, support that, uh, rather than adding too much to the evening. I wanted to get every, give everybody a chance to speak. I know there are probably a lot of different, uh, issues that have come up for everybody. So the podium is open and if people will queue up uh behind the person speaking, so we don't, uh, have delays in getting up there.
One point of clarification, so, um, this is our meeting owl. It is capturing video and also audio. So that is basically your microphone and your camera.
And, um, we'll have everyone in person go first and then we'll check if anyone's online wants to comment as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
My name is Sherwood Cummins. I live at 51 Lakeside. I've been an owner there for 30 years and I have lived on the lagoon off and on for the last 50 years. Um, I'd like to thank you for the great scientific work that you have all done. I have some differing opinions in terms of the depth of the lagoon, Lagoon One. Um, for many years, I have been a windsurfer and paddleboarder on that lagoon. In 1982 or 81, there was no place that I could stand on the bottom and touch the surface. Today, there is no place and at 88 years old, I have a tendency to fall off my paddleboard. Uh, and so there's no place where I can fall off and not stand with my, top of my shoulders out. There is not the storage capacity. In 1983, when we had the big flood there, there were nine inches of water in my garage. It didn't come into the house. I was not living there then, but reports are that that's how much water there was there. I'm concerned that with the climate change and the unpredictability of the amounts of rain, a 24-hour rain is not what is really logical. We have the possibility of much, much more than that. And in 82 and 83, we had 13 inches of rain on a 24-hour period, which also flooded the parking lot at, uh, Redwood High School. And my son, the next day windsurfed the parking lot. So we have that kind of water available in situations like that. My fear is that the lagoon does not have enough capacity. And if somebody would like to go out there and check the depth with me, I have two paddleboards. You can come out with me, use a drop line and determine that there is nothing five feet or higher uh in-depth in the lagoon. Uh, FEMA is requiring a four-foot height uh of foundations in our neighborhood being built now. Why are they so unwilling to believe in the flood control? The possibility of floods? I ask that question and leave it with all of you. Thank you for considering these questions and this possibility.
Thank you, Sherwood. RJ, you want to respond to that as far as, uh, the pertinent questions that come up?
Why don't we do a few and then we'll respond?
Okay.
Uh, Steve Cardellini, 22, Council Crest, uh, stepping on the Lagoon One dredging issue. Um, in the grant deed drawn up by the Madera Gardens developers in 1954, granting ownership of Lagoon One and Two to the town, there was a paragraph that grants to the surrounding homeowners, and this is a quote, "The free and unrestricted right to boating, bathing, fishing and other recreational privileges," end quote. I believe there are two components to these deeded rights. First, physical access to the lagoon. And second, the requirement that the water in the lagoon be of sufficient quantity and quality to support these activities. Without this component, there is no value to the physical access. When we bought 22 Council Crests in the mid-1980s, I was told by the original owner of 28 Council Crests that when they bought their house in the 50s, Lagoon One was 12 feet deep in the middle and on a still day, you could see the bottom. So when the grant deed was written, the water we were guaranteed access to was 12 feet deep in the center and crystal clear. Most of that water has now been displaced and none of the remaining water is crystal clear. So where has all the sediment come from? In 1990, we were told that the town was not responsible for removing the sediment from Lagoon One because it did not come from the town. It came in as silt in the bay water brought in for weekly flushings. Since then, I have been observing and photographing the bottom of the lagoon when the water is removed in the spring and fall. I expected to see greater, the greatest deposition by the gates where my canal brings in that bay water. I expect the amount of deposition to diminish the further it got from the source, like an alluvial fan that you would see at the mouth of a river. I did see an alluvial fan, but it's not at the gates. It's at the mouth of Low Canal. I have photographs here, and actually you have photographs there somewhere, that clearly show that the major portion of the sediment does in fact come from the town. This made perfect sense for 70 years now. Rain that has fallen on Port of Madera has swept the streets, collecting whatever was on the surface, carrying it to the storm drains, then Low Canal, and finally dumping it in the Lagoon One. This could include oil drippings from cars, cigarette butts, pesticides and herbicides that have run down from people's yards and who knows what else? If you washed down the street in front of your house and you collected the runoff in a waiting pool, would you allow your children to play in that water? That's the kind of water that's being sent to us to satisfy the requirements of the grant deed. The spoils that came from the dredging of Lagoon Two in around 1991 were not taken to the local landfill. They had to be loaded on barges and pulled out towards the Farallon Islands and dumped in the ocean. If these deposits are too toxic for the landfill, they're certainly too toxic for us to recreate in. Lagoon One has provided flood control to the town for 70 years now. I think it's time, time for the town to undo the damage to the lagoon that has come as a side effect of that flood protection. It's time for the town to remove the debris and toxins that have been dumping into the lagoon for seven decades. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm Paul Preston and I live in 45 Lakeside. I moved in in, uh, 1977, so that's, uh, 40 some odd years ago. And, um, I appreciate everything that Steve said. That's what's been on my mind and I've never seen it, uh, delineated like that. Uh, I'm a past president of the Lagoon Association last century, which seems like a full century ago. And I don't know if any of you, uh, lived on the lagoon then, not many, or obviously nobody was with the town was there. But, um, what Steve presented as it, it used to be that people said, uh, you know, when we're talking about the, the silt, it was, as it was building up, as if it came out of our backyards. The 60 people live on the lagoon. And the town would minimize the, uh, paragraph that said it was to be made flood control first, of course. But it was built for the recreation of, of the people around it. It wasn't a long paragraph and it was never taken to court by any of our people because when I moved in in 77, you know, there were 30 widows lived on the lagoon. By the time the dredging thing came up in 90, there was 40 widows and nobody, uh, you know, nobody wanted to pay any money into it. And, um, we didn't have a lawyer, but the town always did. And so it just got pushed to the side, to the side, to the side. And so as much as I appreciate all the, the good things that are happening in the, uh, town flood control wise, uh, can I ask how many people in this audience or live on the lagoon number one? Okay, so that's most.
We call it, I might have to cuddle, by the way.
Okay. I, I hear you. Um, so anyway, the idea that, and, and people would talk about, uh, that people from the town talked about it too. Well, uh, people were somehow a little jealous that we had the lagoon and that we were whining about the, the quality of it, when in fact we pay more taxes. And in fact, that, that paragraph and the, and the spirit of it um was kind of left to the side and it's, it was said, it's all, you know, it's all about flood control. And so as much as I've enjoyed all of this and I appreciate it, what, what I want to see is the lagoon dredged. There's no other, if you do a bunch of other options, that, that's great. But the lagoon, it has to be dredged. And I want to see the town pay for all of this. Because the, the silt, when I moved in, it was over 10 feet deep and nobody thought about measuring it because who cared if it was 10 or 12, it was deep. And, you know, and, um, like I said, there were too many people on fixed income to talk about even hiring a lawyer, let alone kicking in, uh, uh, for dredging. So it's my belief that it's the town's job now to do that dredging along with, you know, I didn't hear anything about that, uh, you know, with this. So if anybody, uh, from the audience or the town wants to know about anything more about what, what was happening in the lagoon in, uh, 1977, I'm more than willing to, uh, to, you know, get in contact.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. And so as long as we're rumbling with the lagoon issue, let's just continue with that because the responses will, will be everything that's being asked.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my name is Sally Aaron. I'm a homeowner on 26 Chicasa Court. Uh, we bought our house on the lagoon in March 2019. Uh, the first couple of years on the lagoon were wonderful. Then two years ago, Lagoon One suffered from a terrible algae bloom that lasted about a month. This was our first experience with this situation on the lagoon. By the way, I was up there today, it's coming back. We will have algae again. Uh, we asked, and we asked the city for help. Um, this is when I first discovered there was an outdated email distribution list for Lagoons One and Two and that we were not on this list. Uh, we inquired with the city, uh, if they were able to help with the lagoon. Uh, the city did hire someone to evaluate the problem, but the general answer was no. The city only manages the flood control aspects of the lagoon. So the city did attempt to meet with residents by holding a meeting the week of July 4th um at the pump station. But because the distribution list was so outdated and the timing was so close to July 4th, there were only four of us who actually showed up. So we met with RJ, uh, who's here today. He told us about the storm drain master plan, which is why everybody is here. Because we've been waiting for this plan for about two years. Um, at other times, we have attempted to highlight to the city. We've brought people over to Steve's house to see RJ. We were able to come and see the, the, uh, the fan that comes out from Low Canal. So we've been trying to engage the city for a couple of years, but we have always been told, don't engage, wait for the master plan. So we have been waiting and waiting and waiting. This is why you see this big audience here because the time has now come. We, we, we don't feel like we could be put off anymore because we now have this plan. I currently have a file from one of the residents who's lived on the lagoon for over 30 years. I haven't had them like see her there, it's huge. Um, throughout the files, there's acknowledgement that the city is going to need to dredge Lagoon One when it can no longer be lowered to a certain point. Um, in a recent draft of the master plan to consult the shop of the, which by the way, thank you, was a very, uh, good report. Um, they indicated that there was an average depth of seven and a half feet. Um, and they calculated the capacity on this. There is not a single person who lives there. Not, I live out there today. To me, my little personal measurements, there is no way that we have an average of five feet without doing. Outside, outside in my house, it's three feet, four inches. Um, 22. There is, and they're relying on another two and a half feet that they're going to go up, get into our yards in case of a flood. And there are a lot of people in the lagoon who don't even have retaining walls. So that's just going to get washed out. Um, but what is most interesting about the report is that it is very clear that Lagoon One is an integral part of maintaining the storm drainage system because it's taking everything from the foothills south of Lagoon One up to Chicasa Court. And Lagoon One, you know, as much as we want to say it's for our enjoyment, it's part of the storm drain master plan because it's been included in here. So it is very important for flood control and it needs to be dealt with because it's filling up with silt and sediment. Um, Lagoon One has been ignored by the city for too long and it's been accumulating sediment for decades. The sediment is due to the runoff of Lagoon One receives from the surrounding areas of Low Canal because that is where everything is coming from. Um, we need to deal with that to ensure the viability of Lagoon One in the future. So I have a few things I would respectfully like to request.
That was three minutes, so please wrap it up.
I will. The storm drain master plan should not be approved in its current draft form. The depth of Lagoon One should be evaluated with physical measurements versus drone footage to ensure correct capacity is reported as a baseline measurement of capacity. The report and the history, the report should include a history and evaluation of the sediment buildup since Lagoon One was first established. And it should establish a firm timeline and date by which the city should dredge Lagoon One so that it does not turn into a marsh. The city of Port of Madera should commit to measuring the depth of Lagoon One annually um to an agreed measurement protocol and those depths should be made public. The form, we should have, if you're going to form an assessment to dredge the lagoon, it should not be of Lagoon One residents. It should be every single person who is draining into our lagoon. It should not be us paying for it. I would also like to see the city of Port of Madera become more proactive in engaging the Lagoon One residents. You're holding, listening and learning sessions with people in East Port of Madera. We would like to have the same, uh, as well. And lastly, the city of Port of Madera should really know the residents of the lagoon that that's two and about that two and a half feet, so that people can consider retaining walls. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Uh, greetings. Uh, my name is Martha Whitney. I'm the 47th office.
Greetings. My name is Martha Whitney. I'm the fourth chairman of the Boulevard with my husband, Camilo Mami. A few weeks ago in April, my husband and I removed two and a half feet of solid soil from around and under our dock. The cost was nine hundred and forty-three dollars, which includes a penalty of two hundred dollars. In two thousand nine, we replaced our dock and repaired our retaining wall. In April, we dug down to where the soil was level in two thousand nine. That's approximately two feet in fourteen years. That's one level foot of soil every seven years. The reason we had the soil removed were that plants were growing under and around our dock that were three to four feet high and they no longer grew in the lagoon water, but on land on the edge of the lagoon. Not in the water. The water in the lagoon, when it was at its highest level, stopped covering the soil in the lagoon eight feet out from the edge of our property's retaining wall. Out there, that far, that's where the lagoon ended. Here's our property. Okay, therefore, the lagoon is smaller in size than it was fourteen years ago. It's been like this for the last four years. By removing the two feet of soil just around our dock, the lagoon water now reaches our property's retaining wall. It's one foot deep. That's it. That's the lagoon depth. Okay, we've been here thirty-seven years. At one foot for every seven years, that means the lagoon is less deep by a little over five feet since we bought our home and the lagoon is becoming less wide or smaller. If I currently stand out in the middle of the lagoon, the water comes to mid-chest on me. I'm five foot seven, so it's four feet deep. In fourteen years, it will be two feet deep. Oops, that's wetlands, which can't be dredged. The lagoon was set up to alleviate flood circumstances, which serves the entire town. The byproduct of soil dumping was not addressed at the time the canal was created. To date, the town of Puerto Madera has ignored any liability for the transfer of large amounts of soil from the town lowlands and hills into the town lagoon. Once the lagoon becomes wetlands in fourteen years, note on your calendar, it cannot be restored nor planted upon and without running water going through it, it becomes wetlands. It will smell. It will drive out lagoon homeowners and their non-lagoon neighbors. With their homes having no sale value, you cannot have tall plants or trees within fifty feet of the wetland's edge, according to the state of California. Roads are not permitted in the wetlands buffer zone. The canal flood control system will not exist. The lagoon pumps won't work. This will directly affect the sixty-one homes around the lagoon and home businesses. Ah, loss of tax revenue. Indirectly affected are the homes and businesses opposite these homes, including Madera Suites Hotel, Best Western, Puerto Madera Inn, Puerto Madera Plaza, the Enst Movie Theater, and the Town Center Shopping Center. Loss of tax revenue. Were they notified at this meeting? So, solutions. We always have to come up with solutions. Well, dredge the lagoon and then face the same problem in thirty years. So we need to do more. Solution two, stop the flow of soil into the lagoon by the town, creating a barrier that only water could go through. The town could remove the excess soil from the canal if it had to. Flood control for Puerto Madera using the canal and the lagoon would continue as before without the added soil. No point in dredging if you keep dumping dirt. So you need to take care of that first. Solution three, once the flow of soil is no longer entering the lagoon, dredge two feet of soil across the entire lagoon, which would put us back to the level of two thousand nine. This would get us to six feet deep on average. Find a home for the soil, which would reduce the cost even further, especially if we can sell it. I think of selling the soil for build. And today, it was suggested to you by Bob Bundy that applying the soil to the levee that protects all of us would be the most economical way to move this much material. So there are solutions. This is not a you or me or catch-all or, this is a win-win for us. Take the soil out, put it in landfill, fill the levees, sell it to someone who needs soil. But we do need to stop the soil coming into the lagoon first, or all of it is not. That's the first thing. And let's not be stupid about this. If it's coming in, there's no point.
There are finish hours, okay?
Yeah.
Chris is doing his best to keep things at three minutes. See if Taylor everything. Try not to repeat anything that's been gone over before other than the doors.
Sure, so I'm, I'm living at thirty-one Lakeside Drive. I concur, and I think everyone here is our main concern. Raise your hand if it's the capacity of our lagoon has been misrepresented. And we would like a better evaluation of it because we're concerned that Lagoon One isn't an essential part of the flood plan. But by overestimating it, you're saving one part of Puerto Madera from flooding and then instead flooding other homes potentially. So we have to have an equitable plan that's going to at least keep everything at the baseline and not substitute one neighborhood for another. The other thing we're concerned about in the plan that we addressed is that if you, it's only based on the present level of the lagoon. But that's dynamic and the plan also needs to take into effect the amount of silting that comes in every year that will decrease the function of Lagoon One in its capacity to help the entire town.
Well, I think we get a sense of the audience that Lagoon One's capacity and the ability to use it as it's been used before is paramount here, so let's go ahead and see if we can address this. And I'll leave it to the consultants and our engineering staff before inviting the flood board to comment.
Yeah. Watch us? What? Okay, let's do the one online. We'll answer questions.
Okay. And so Roy, I've allowed you to unmute. You should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Roy Wolford. I live in Mariner Cove. Been here for half a century. I've been here a little while. I like scientific data, like scientific facts, and I would encourage the board to clarify terms like sea level rise. So we know over in Mariner Cove that eighty-five percent of quote-unquote sea level rise is really due to settlement. It's a sinking feeling. Read, I've been reading some articles in China and I remember when we were going through the studies and the surveys and doing the assessment and the plan and that sort of thing. People were saying, hey, in China, the sea level is rising at a tremendous rate. Okay, so sea level in China, rising three point five millimeters per year. Study has just been done. Settlement in eighty-six of China's largest cities, there's settlement of three millimeters. So that's a half, a half a millimeter per year difference in sea level rise. So also too, there was a mention on additional precipitation coming down in the report. And let me just go through some numbers. This comes from Marina's Water District, but NOAA and the National Weather Board have similar data. In eighteen eighty-nine, there was a hundred, almost a hundred and two inches of rain that year. In eighteen ninety-six, over two hundred and twenty-two inches. In eighteen ninety-nine, almost a hundred and eighteen inches. I think there was some mention of eighteen eighty-two, and that was a bad year because that was flooded. Sand Clemente Drive was completely flooded and it rained all the previous day, all that night, a lot of flood everywhere. That was not a good year. That was seventy-four inches, okay? And then following year, eighteen, nineteen eighty-three, almost ninety-seven inches. And last year, twenty twenty-three, seventy-four inches. So this notion that it's always going to be more and more precipitation is not following what has been happening in the past. And they're going to say, well, hey, the past has nothing to do with it. It's all models. I think there were a couple of mention of models. Well, you know, models are models and data gets thrown in. And there was a lot of modeling done in the plans and the assessments and there was ridiculous amounts of sea level rise in tens of feet. It's ridiculous. Let's get scientifically factual information in there. And then also too, I know RJ, I know I've heard you mentioned that there is dislocation of piping and it's due to settlement. And I'm wondering, I didn't see anything in the report and I'll admit, I didn't read all, what, five hundred pages of reports or four hundred some odd pages. So I'd like to know if you can answer that tonight. Did that study take into account that we've got storm drain pipes that are settling differentially and that's causing you an issue? It's just not the rusting away of the pipes and that sort of thing. We know that's an issue, particularly over here in Mariners Cove. I do want to say, and everybody should know, that in Mariner Cove, there were check valves put in for the storm drains. They were going out into Sand Clemente Creek. And at least on Sea Wolf Drive where I live, that has done a tremendous job. It stops the tidal flooding that we were getting quite a bit in the gutters and that sort of thing. And it was eroding the asphalt on the streets and that sort of thing. So that's been stopped. Now, the downside of the check valves is, is that it does stop the tide from coming in. And it stops it a lot. I'd say there was probably at least a couple of dozen tidal floodings that we would get every year from the storm drain. But when the check valve stops the tide from coming in and it's raining, guess what? We get flooding. So that's kind of the way it works. As soon as the tide goes down, the check valves open up the water receipts. So those are just some comments. I just, please, make the study, it looks like a tremendous study, a lot of good data, but let's stop the, I call it fudmeistering on the sea level rise because it's a combination of things and sea level rise has to be looked at in terms of relative land movement. And we have downward land movement in Mariner Cove, no doubt about it. Thank you.
Baby, can you tell if anybody calling in wants to comment on the lagoon? And we can hold the others till we move on?
Currently, we just have one more online.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and could I just say, for the record, for the board, can you also record that there was a petition with thirty-nine other people signing that the Lagoon One capacity reassessed? That's been submitted on a public comment.
Okay, so Tim, your next online public comment. You should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Right. Thanks a lot. I live in, on Grove Avenue, so up on the top of Tamil Pious. And Mike, I have a couple of questions, but primarily, in the report, are there nature-based solutions that other cities are considering, including permious pavement, swales, dry beds, additional vegetation? As it relates to vegetation, in twenty fourteen, Marin calculated that a million and a half gallons of storm water was intercepted by the trees in Marin County. It sounds like from the comments of the people who live around the lagoon that the lack of filtration, the lack of retention of storm water at the sources before it flows downhill is contributing to the sediment in these lagoons. And I just ask that nature-based solutions be considered as opposed to having to revisit the same problem ten years, twenty years down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's this look like?
All right, we have one more written comment from Brian Muller. I've been living on the lagoon since since April nineteen ninety-one. I'm acutely aware that the depth of the lagoon and the corresponding capacity is decreasing significantly over my thirty-plus years here. Lagoon was designed as a key piece of the Ross Valley flood control. Given that we have witnessed some significantly stronger storms in the past five years, possibly as a whole, I'm changing. It is obvious that we need to dredge Lagoon One in the near future. Brian. Okay. That's all the public comment. We can start answering some of the questions you just heard. There's a couple of things. I'm certainly going to look to Chapman Wheeler on components, but the first gentleman mentioned just FEMA base flood elevations. And so FEMA establishes the base flood elevation nationally is ten feet. As a town, we have added a one-foot level on that. So unless you were behind a FEMA certified levee, that is what we need to build to if you're in that new construction, which is a little improvement. Beta model, our flood control infrastructure, it really has to be on a FEMA certified Burma levee. So the other one I want to touch on is, you know, we're not here saying that siltation hasn't occurred. And so I just, you know, want to touch on that and maybe Robin can speak to what you observed during your analysis. We have hired Chapman Wheeler. This is what they do. This is what they specialize in to evaluate how the lagoons perform in their current condition. And based on the standards we've set for the town, they're saying it is within those standards. So you talk about just, I guess, siltation, degradation, conveyance, and maybe how some of those things work within the model and then maybe some observations you have from the data that you guys received.
Sure. So the drone survey was done when the lagoons were as low as they could go from the pump stations. So it is correct that there is some standing water. And our survey team did their best to basically estimate where the bottom of the lagoon is. And the model is taking in the information that we have. And there's a couple of different components that come into play because the lagoon is a storage which basically acts as what we call a wet well for your pump station. So it is the pump station that serves as the flood control, getting the water out while it's coming in during a peak storm. And so what we have seen and we have looked at the town in a holistic model and we have developed the prioritized CIPs based on where we see the most significant flooding. And that is in the report. So the one thing about dredging down, and we're dealing with this actually in several other lagoon areas that are backed by a pump. And the problem is, is that the pump has an intake set level. So when you dredge down deeper, you get what we call dead storage. It's not flood control storage because the pump doesn't have the ability to pump that low. So unless you have the ability to drain all the way down to bear mud before the rain comes in, that dredging down doesn't add a volumetric storage for flood control. Which I understand is not...
So let me, I can, I worked up a little sketch here because I know this is an area that...
Asking for a deeper lagoon than it was originally built at. They're asking for it to be the lagoon that the pump would perform.
Well, I'm just explaining our analysis was to hire, they had draw an engineer to evaluate whether it meets our town's level of standard for flood control. But I want to make sure that people understand this concept because I think it's an important one. I'm going to share a sketch that I just put together just because I think it's... Okay, and that's fine. I'm going to show it to them because perhaps the board will care. I don't know that everyone grasps this, so it's important. So we all know the lagoon has set points, right? In the summer, it's allowed to be higher. That's controlled by pumps. In the winter, it's lower because at any time or more often, higher probability of rains, therefore more need for storage. So what Robin is talking about is, you know, it's likely a lot of the siltation and aggregation is occurring below this red line. And that doesn't actually impact the potential volume that the lagoon has. So that's what's there.
Do you know at what depth it is now?
You know at what depth it is now?
Is, is that?
This is just conceptual. This is just conceptual.
But do you know the depth of the intake? Where, where is it now?
We have information. So I mean, um.
But you don't. It's from a drone.
Yeah, what's?
We have the, sorry, that we have the set points for where that rectangle is for the pump station, which kind of sets what basically is underneath that red line, which we're calling dead storage. It's not flood control storage.
But it could be.
We're saying.
We'll, we'll get more information, but I mean, the survey information they've done is within how many inches?
It's within two or three inches. But again, the, the, the challenge is that the lagoon is never completely dry because of how low it can get from when we did our survey.
Even when it was not completely dry, the model was saying that it, it meets the twenty-five year.
It does.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
I think we're missing the point. The point is we have a mud puddle outside our house and it used to be watered even two years ago. That's the point.
Four years ago, I got the, the lagoon ended out at the end and went dark. Okay. And because I dug out.
The lagoon is silted in eight, eight sentences, but.
And I now have the water coming up to my home.
We're, we're discussing, you know, the flood control needs.
Right.
I think what I'm hearing are a lot of other arguments.
We have, we even have other arguments, but our main argument is here because of the flood control plan. We disagree with the capacity you have estimated that can fill for the purpose of controlling flood in the entire town. We are concerned that it's going to flood our homes and you're substituting one for another. Our second concern is that the plan doesn't take into, into account at all the increasing sedimentation that's going to occur every year after this, in the next ten to twenty-five years. That's going to make that little area you just showed us like this. So if we have an objection and we disagree with your data, how do we go about that as a town together?
Um, so I'll touch on a couple of things. Um, so that generally speaking, flood controls studies, we're going to want to do this on like a once a decade cycle. So meaning it took us two years to get this point. So roughly, we're going to target eight years from now to do this exercise again and to see where we're at. So I'm just telling you, so I'm saying, well, I'm saying that because I, I, I don't want us to look out twenty, thirty years because we're not. We're looking at the next ten.
And fourteen years, we're going to have two feet.
Let's look at the next two years.
Two feet of water out there in fourteen years.
Are you, are you such an aversion to doing the dredging? I mean, even if we had a parcel task, why does the town object so much?
Because of money.
Again, I, we're here to talk flood control. There, I think there's arguments here, but they're, they're not tied to flood control. That's all I'm trying to say.
That's an example of the town bullying lagoon number one like it has for forty years, what you just said.
Um, I'll give you an example.
Flood control, it's flood control, it's flood control.
I, I, and then I just want to make one other comment and then I will turn it to the board for further discussion, but, um, you know, siltation, degradation is a natural occurring phenomenon. Have, have people been to surferances or point raised? I understand. But, but I think there's a difference in, there's, there's this.
I don't mean to speak out of turn here, but listen, what are you going to do when you don't have the use of the lagoon for flood control? Anymore. Go up to Bahia and find out what happens when reeds begin growing. And if I had to take on the United States Marine Corps or the environmentalists, I'll go up against the Marines. I've looked, I've lived here since the early nineties and I remember when there wasn't a pump station. We had George Mormon, who was a financial genius, who decided we, we could assess ourselves. We did. We built the pump station. We still have sedimentation in the lagoon. Nothing's done about it. To give you an idea anecdotally about the town's attitude, when I first bought our home over on Sixth Chickasaw Court, there was a float, a swim float out in the middle. How many of you remember this? There's a float in the middle of the good was built by the generation that fought World War Two, bought the homes, raised their families. That float brought, that it broke loose during that record storm we had in the early nineties and came up and destroyed our dock. That called the town, not our problem. So I had to pay to get that thing cut up and hauled out. And that was the beginning of the attitude that I was beginning to see about this whole problem with the lagoon. Now I've served on the council. I've been the mayor. I've been in, I've been up here like you haven't listened to disenfranchised citizens who are not happy and I'm not happy. And I'd like to see some action on this. I don't mean to be contentious, but I'm really.
Need to be contentious.
Feet deep. How does that serve us?
When, when you begin to get reeds growing up out of, and it's all over.
I got reeds.
I, I think all of us here feel disrespected when you say we're not doing this because of flood control. How many people are here because they're concerned their homes are going to be flooding? That's why we're here. We're not here because we want to use a canoe or have clear water. So please.
But that's an aspect too. We, we deserve it.
So let's, let's pull it back to the flood board.
Article in the Independent Journal, August nineteenth, nineteen sixty-nine, by the woman who bought the home that I am fortunate enough to live in, in thirty-two Madera Boulevard. Nine of rant told them at that time, gentlemen, we're not in a property restrict, stricken area. But can we do something about this filling of the lagoon with silt? She topped her talk saying, I almost brought you a present tonight in a bag, a very dead rat. This is a health issue.
Nineteen sixty.
Nineteen sixty-nine.
Nineteen sixty-nine.
RJ, I just, I just gave Robin a copy of a contour map that was prepared in nineteen eighty-nine for the town of Corder Madera, showing the levels and around Lagoon One. The deepest point then was five point five feet. The shallowest point was four point three feet. And we've had thirty-eight years, thirty-five years, excuse me, of fil, of filtration since then. It can't be five feet deep on average.
Not on average, at the deepest.
I want to pull this back to the flood board because we've heard a lot of, uh, concerns, uh, a lot of thoughts, a lot of recommendations and such. And I, I, I want to sort of query the board on this, but, uh, again, this, this was a, uh, a flood study that, uh, Robin has overseen that looked at immediate flooding over the next decade. I think the, uh, flood board, uh, needs to listen to all of the concerns and look at things going forward into the future for the lagoons. We all know that, uh, some dams are being decommissioned because they silt up and lagoons have some of that same problem. They silt up.
So maybe the flood plan should be put in abeyance for a while until these issues are addressed and not accepted. And presented to the city council.
Again, that, that, that's listening to the, to the flood board. I mean, we've got a document here that talks about, uh, parts of, uh, Corder Madera that are flooding now and that, uh, parts where, areas where the, the levees are, uh, settling and low and need to be reinforced because a breach of those levees at high tide would be catastrophic. So I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time. And let me, let me see what the comments are from the flood board and then we can see where we are. So, you want any comments?
No, I just appreciate everybody sharing their opinions on this. Obviously it wasn't front and center and what I read to get prepared for it, but it's something that's, you know, piqued my interest and certainly something I'd like to look into, see your perspective more firsthand. So thank you for that.
And I would.
Nathan?
I was wondering if Robin and RJ and Chris could speak to how us and members of the public can make official comments on the draft document. Um, I think it's important, all the things you brought up and the things you submitted, but we want to have very specific references to elevations or things that you think are wrong in the report and show your own evidence or areas that need to be reassessed. Um, the way these things work, you know, sometimes there's a lot of back and forth in documents like this, whether it's a town or a company doing this. And so you just need an official forum to submit comments and an official forum for those comments to be responded to. So, um, we want to see all those in one place. Maybe you could speak to how that can be done. Um.
I was going to let Chris respond.
Oh, okay. Oh, I was just going to say you can, anyone can email me and I will add your comment to our log and we'll review all those, um, when we're taking a look at the draft.
Also summarize that for public record. So.
Yeah. Yeah, I just suggest being extremely specific about exact, um, sections of the report that you might object to. Exact numbers. And if you have data that counters that to supply that as well, that just makes the process still.
Can we get notified when somebody submits anything or are you running the tab? How is there transparency for people to see what the communication's been?
We're happy to post it all publicly. Um, we can establish a, a formal comment period and have them all available. Um, that's not a problem.
Just is, this is a flood control board and this, our, uh, sixty people live on the lagoon. What they bought into years ago has now been silted up, not from their backyards, but from the rest of the town. And we're hearing again, this is a flood control meeting and I'm not seeing our concerns ever addressed yet. Never. And that's, that's what, that's what everybody's upset about.
I, I think that what we have here is the town is not responding. In nineteen ninety, the flood control board apparently, because the town offered uh, to pay for half the dredging of lagoon number two and lagoon number one. Lagoon number two voted to do it. It was going to cost each resident twenty thousand dollars. That the, the, uh, city of, the town of Corder Madero was going to pay that much also. They were going to take that as a loan, a lien against people's homes or they could, uh, pay it off a thousand dollars a year with no interest. That was when we had the village, it was brand new and there was a lot of taxmen. But I haven't heard RJ respond to the fact that in nineteen ninety, the city said, we need to do this. And at that point then, when our lagoon voted down by two votes because of, as you said, the widows who lived there couldn't afford to do more. Then they, that's when they put, the flood control board put in a new pump that would help out. As far as I'm concerned, not enough now, but it was then. So the, the city acknowledged that there was a major problem back then and made that offer. They're not acknowledging it now. And that's the thing that bothers us, RJ. And you're.
They made that offer.
We're letting that on your desk.
Fifty fifty because we didn't have any legal representation. So just because that was made then, the town should be paying the entire freight on this. That's, that's my belief. And, you know, uh, now we have enough, uh, younger people with some money, you know, I hope we come up with a lawyer because, you know, you're talking like a lawyer, the town has a lawyer. We've never had any representation. Once we all leave this room, I wonder what's going to happen, if anything.
Okay, back to the flood board.
Sure.
Yes. Saji, you have some comments.
Thank you for all of your input. Appreciate your hearing. Obviously people are very passionate about it and we appreciate that input. Um, kudos to Chapman Wheeler. I think you guys did a really good report. I had read almost all of it. The first section, I haven't gone to the appendices, so I will be, um, submitting comments as well, but I think it was really thorough. I think the modeling was really very detailed. I mean, I've, I've done this kind of work and it's dense. What you had to go through, all the data that you had to go through to compile to get common data, I'm sure, on all of the networks and on the, um, you know, the, the, all of the, you know, modeling, the hydrologic modeling, all that. I thought it was really, really well done. So kudos to you. I do have a couple of questions, just to, point of clarification, um, RJ, you pointed out about the wedge, right? Above the node in the one foot depth.
Yes.
So that is specifically, like if it shows greater than one foot, it shows that the wedge is potentially greater than one foot, but we don't really know relative to like a specific node, what like a, you know, a living space or a garage elevation might be, right? Because it's kind of specific to that location. So it's not necessarily that you're going to see damage with that level, right? It's just saying that you're going to see probably pounding in the streets of some footish. Is that accurate?
It's, it's accurate in the sense that we use it as a prioritization tool. So the cones above each node are the same volume. So we're, we're looking at those red nodes are a higher priority than the yellow and the green nodes because they are more flooded, meaning that conveyance restriction is a higher priority.
Okay.
And that's how we prioritize the different projects. So the reality is that if you took that into a two D model, depending on the topography, it would probably spill out. Now, if it's in a bowl, then it actually could be very similar. But we use that as really sort of the screening tool to prioritize where the major issues are.
And then in terms of like the project prioritizations, what if it's like the capacity? Then you use that, whatever the one foot, the red nodes, so to speak, to kind of prioritize the areas that fell into whatever the high, high priority.
The very high.
Correct. Very high. Okay. Um, I think that was kind of it for me. I thought it was really well done.
David, anything particularly in regard to Lagoon One?
Um, yeah, I mean, we called this meeting to get input from the, uh, community. Um, in whatever fashion, like Ethan was saying, um, technical reports I've dealt with, you, you get comments and there's a response. Whether it's through, um, uh, response to emails and a online forum or an added section to this draft report about sedimentation and its role in flood control, I think could be appropriate and serves the needs of the community.
If, if the levees are having a problem, why aren't we, are we going to be buying soil to shore them up? Are we buying anything to shore them up? Are we digging? Where is the soil coming from for those levees?
Well, I mean, that, that's a separate issue. The terms are available, but one of.
A bunch of soil we don't need.
I understand that. So the, the way, the way I look at, look at this is that, um, Steve talked about the sediment from Lagoon Two being toxic and had to be hauled away to a hazardous waste site. Now, I know that, uh, B C D C and the Army Corps of Engineers are looking at spoils that are dredged much differently. They're seeing those as valuable resource because the bay doesn't have as much sediment as it used to. And we're losing wetlands and we need to put more sediment into the wetlands. Um, and so I would sort of question now, is this still considered a hazardous waste that would have to be hauled away someplace else or could it, we find some reuse for it?
I hope so. That's a good, that's a good thing.
Yeah. So, so I think this, this should be looked at, but I also want to recognize that this was really a well-done report that dealt with, you know, flooding, uh, that's currently going on or has the potential to be catastrophic. Uh, or that, uh, can happen as we go forward. So I, I said before that this is something that's going to help us over the next, uh, uh, ten, twenty, thirty years. We're looking really at ten years, as RJ said, uh, to try to implement some things that are high priorities to do. I think that the, uh, the issue with the sediment buildup, it is going to erode the capacity of Lagoon One and, uh, to be able to retain its capacity. Uh, dredging down, you know, below the level of the input may not add to it, but certainly the, the, uh, the, the, the livial, uh, buildup, uh, around the edges, uh, that increase the, you know, decrease the capacity of the lagoon to accommodate, uh, floodwaters. The, the other, so I think that the town should work with the residents to look at, is there a way to try to dredge some of those spoils to help with flood control going into the next couple of decades as well as to provide, you know, what you had or what, what was there when it was originally done. So I, I would, that would be my recommendation is that, uh, you know, we work, uh, with the town on a special project to really look at, uh, both lagoons. The, the other thing I, I do want to add is that the, uh, you know, flood board, I guess, was established after the eighty-two, uh, floods and the flooding that happened by, in that community over there was a result. was a result of the inability to get things out through the canal and the Corte Madera Creek. And the High Canal Pump Station was funded for that specific purpose. So that really has helped with a lot of flood control over in that area. The other thing that protects you is, are the levees. You know, either they're, they're not good levees along Corte Madera Creek, but we still have existing levees on the face side of Corte Madera that are protecting all of the low-lying areas in Corte Madera. And that's why, you know, I think we need to look at buildup, as has been recommended in this study, starting with the areas that are really, you know, at risk to cause potential catastrophic flooding in Marina Village in particular, because that really is a low area protected by those levees. So my, my recommendation is to really look at trying to create some kind of ad hoc committee or subcommittee that would look at this in regard to both lagoons, sort of separate from some of the, the flood issues that have been addressed in the document, which are very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So those are my thoughts.
And mitigation of further sediment coming in. There are ways to stop the sediment coming in.
It took seventy years to get to where it is now, so.
That could be something that could be, be looked at in this ad hoc committee.
Whether that's done or not dredging was to be.
Yeah, I think I agree that if, if the sediment buildup continues, then at some point there, there will be an absolute problem with the capacity and the ability to serve as some degree of flood protection for that watershed.
Yeah. Now, are you gonna do that? Are you gonna move to make an ad hoc committee after this? Can you put it to, to support after this?
I know, I think we've got, you know, I think we've heard, I think very clearly some of the, you know, requests from the Lagoon One folks, really we just need to bring this in and discuss it. This might be a discussion with council.
But would an ad hoc committee include some, some of the residents?
I don't think we have the information to really decide that right now. I mean, we really did get a lot of good feedback and we want to get even more feedback. So what I was gonna offer is if there's, we will use the email lagoon thread for those that are on it. For anyone who doesn't think they're on it, please write down an email here. We'll make sure we add you to it.
So do you have the most recent one that I, I sent to Samantha?
She, she's the one who uses it, so yes. So she is the one who sends out the messages.
Well, we have all, all have access to an email thread of the people in the lagoon.
I don't believe that.
Cause I've asked for that before and there's some privacy issues and that. And also, when one was generated, you know, there was fifteen people that don't live there anymore and it's.
I have, I have a recent one, but it doesn't make it to the everybody. And many people don't understand the next step then. What, what are we doing relative to what's.
We're here to review the results of a flood control, storm grid, storm grid master plan. And so that's our focus. And so we're gonna take your comments and see how they might impact that report. And come out with a new draft, a further comment. If we need to hold additional outreach events, we will. But we're focused on a complete document, so we can start with the priority needs for flood control investments.
Yeah, and is Lagoon Number One, is it never gonna have the priority of the report?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Are the issues that we've raised tonight about Lagoon Number One going to be included in that report? Are they gonna be addressed by this plan?
We're gonna, so there's two things. We're gonna look at it from the engineering perspective, because we've hired a specialist firm, that's all they do. The things that you brought up, they might resonate with other parts of our overall town infrastructure or town.
We would like.
This is a flood plan, you want the dredging in the plan.
But again, so, so we can, we can even look at, we can even look at hiring another firm to peer review this if there's a.
Everybody knows that Lagoon needs to be dredged, it's about who's gonna pay for it.
Well, I think there's just a discrepancy in the report on the height. You just even say that's because of one side is, when residents came and they have pages. We feel there's a discrepancy in the report about the height of the water. So that puts us within your flood plan, if the sediment is not.
So, so we're gonna work with them, they'll review it. If they, if we need to do more, you know, surveys to verify, we will.
I think that goes to what we're saying about, like you're still keeping it as the owner where we need transparency and communications. When you say you will, where are we brought into that understanding of what's happening when, when new?
So everything, so we're gonna summarize all the feedback they received.
And then send notes or?
Well, and so we're gonna give everyone an opportunity to provide all your comments in detail. We'll respond to them in detail. We'll update the document in detail. And then we'll put that draft out again for another round of comments.
Okay. Why would somebody do Number One included in the plan in the first place?
It is included.
It is.
Okay.
You didn't hear anything about it.
So what we don't address, and I think that we can do better at describing the historical sedimentation is we are analyzing it based on today. And we have found that even though it has silted over, we don't, even though it has silted over, it still shows based on our modeling results that it has capacity. But I, I agree, I understand.
I am not making a sexy people into consideration.
I think what we can do is we can do better at putting a description of what the design, if we can, I mean, I have this back to eighty-nine. If we can get this on the same datum as ours, we can, we can, just like we talked about the subsidence, we can talk about the siltation. And then we can take a look and make sure that ours, the thymmetry that we, our survey is, if you can send some pictures of some spot points, we can do QA QC on our thymmetry. And then we can make sure and rerun it again. I can't guarantee that we're gonna show that it's limited in capacity, but we will at least discuss the siltation.
You can sit down and stick and find out all you need to know.
That's what I was gonna say, rather than spend the money on another expensive report, you have your little motorized boat. If you put two men in there for eight hours with a stick that has dimensions on it, you can find out if the first one is inaccurate and if you need to do the second. Also, can somebody determine the depth of the intakes on the pumps and then, and let us know what that is?
Yeah.
So we know exactly what we're talking about.
That's a cheap fix in the scheme.
Can you also refer back to the nineteen ninety report where they said that it does need to be dredged and a dredge line holding it right now?
Okay, yeah. And I, and I have a map that.
If this plan is for ten years, the plan doesn't include the dynamic status of the lagoon, but it's constantly filling this thing.
I understand that, but I think there, there's two things here. I think we can all agree that it has silted over. But what we don't fully know is has the siltation completely limited its flood control? Because there are a variety of components such as the High Canal Pump Station and the pump stations on Lagoon One that play with this storage. So I can't say that just because it has silted over, to RJ's point, that it's not providing the twenty-five-year flood control that it is intended to.
Again, it's all flood control. Sixty people on the lagoon don't matter.
That it has to have for that twenty-five, two feet, three feet?
So this.
How many feet?
Exercise, and, and I'm not, this isn't the only potential exercise, but this exercise is focused on flood control. So many, many groups, many HOAs frankly, flood districts dredge. You know, I've been involved in dredging for Paradise K in my previous employer. Bahia, the HOA at Bahia, they put their money together, they dredged. So I mean, it's, it's, I'm not saying dredging doesn't happen and there isn't a benefit. Often it's navigational, recreational.
Where did those, their siltation come from?
It's not, it's not a one answer.
The point I was, the point I was making earlier and.
Okay, so it's the.
We don't assume that it's the same depth everywhere. We don't.
It doesn't, okay, the lagoon is one and a half feet to two and a half feet across, could we still have flood control? Now, we'd like to know that number.
When, when they did the drone survey, our staff turned pumps on and pumped it all the way to bottom. There was no silt showing through, no, nothing. So that means that that is the bottom of our flood control use. So dredging will not help us.
We puff the water out, that is the lowest.
Yeah, we want you to help us.
It'll be, it's okay if it's like half a foot. You're saying.
If it's below the.
We're not, we're not saying, we're just asking the experts, can it function to a flood standard? It said the other, the rest of the town is, is being asked some.
So how did I get this photo that shows all that deposition among you? If you can't pump the water down far enough to expose filtration? Because if you look at that photo, there's a whole hell of a lot of filtration there. And also, if you want them, I have photographs and also some video on, probably on Super Eight that I've taken since nineteen ninety until today. It shows the gradual increase of the sediment that's in the lagoon.
We totally understand that the only ones of the lagoon should be considered for flood control. We don't think that the seven point five two capacity that you estimated is correct.
The paragraph in the original deed is, is never been addressed.
Does that hold?
Not, not one, it's all flood control.
I think I'll answer that one. So I think you just write the comment about free and unrestricted rights.
Yes.
So, I mean, if you live on the ocean, you have free unrestricted rights to the ocean.
Right.
But do, do.
If a ship pulls up to the beach and dumps a load of sand or, not sand, debris there, whose responsibility is it to remove it? Whoever dumped it.
The ocean brings a sandbar.
Yeah, that's not what's happening here. What's happening here is the way the flood control system was designed. The rain comes down, it picks up, picks up debris or particulates. It washes them down the canal and dumps them in the lagoon. They settle to the bottom. The next week, when the lagoon is flushed, the water leaves, the sediment stays. The, the issue here is, is not who has the right to go in there? Because that says we have a right also to go in there and do any, any repairs that are needed. The issue is who's responsible for the deposition of that filtration? It says further down in that deed that the town will use the, the lagoon exclusively for flood control. Flood control involves collecting and channeling and storing and disposing of water. But what you're not considering is the fact that you're not just moving and storing water, you're moving and storing silt in Lagoon Number One. If the town put the silt in Lagoon Number One, the town is responsible for removing the silt from Lagoon Number One. That's how I see it.
Oh, and wanting to pull this back to the flood board and try to get through the rest of this long agenda that we have this evening, I would like to say that the, this is the flood board and this is a flood study of immediate problems. I think that you can easily project out where there are gonna be flood problems going forward. You know, it may be after another, you know, foot of silt that comes in or two feet of silt, but it will happen. And I think that there's a bigger issue here than just something that engineering and the flood board can really address. I think the idea of some ad hoc committee with the town council and with engineering and potentially some other study consultants to look specifically at the lagoons is what is needed. I think this really needs to get bumped up to a town council level. I'm willing, and I, no other board members would be willing to work with that. And that's what RJ and Chris do, that's their job. But I think going, I think the study is really good for, for what it's done. I think your concerns are in relation to how you use it and then what's gonna happen as siltation continues. So I, I, this is, this is my thought on how we should deal with it.
Are you able to give direction to move that forward then to direct that? Is that good to the?
That's my recommendation.
And or, and a committee?
Yeah.
You can do that then.
Well, I'm, we're, we're an advisory board, but my advice to the town council and to engineering is that would be the direction I would like to see us go.
It's a combination of logic and science together.
For the, you know, we're definitely an enthusiastic group here tonight. So for us to be able to approach this in a more collaborative way, because we, we set this ad hoc committee. Should we be forming that ad hoc committee and having one person communicate? We don't wanna walk away and not.
I, I would see it as, you know, made up of flood board members, community members from the lagoon and one or two of the town council members.
And then timing on that.
Plus Chris and RJ.
We, we will absolutely, and, and thank you for everyone who gave us emails. We will circle back with specific ways to provide your feedback. I know we've already heard a lot of it, but we want to make sure we hear it all. And we'll do that via email, so everyone knows where they can submit their comments, how much they, how much time they have. We'll give at least a few weeks. That'll all be in an email that we send out. And then we'll also use that to set up one of the next steps.
And timing on that?
We can get that email out in the next day or two.
And how, how do we find out what you guys are saying? You're hearing what we're saying. Wonder how do we hear your response to what we're saying?
So any comment, any feedback, so we'll try to, based on verbal comments, we can try and create themes or, or common questions and maybe do an FAQ. Or specific comments, you know, that you say, hey, this paragraph, this section will provide a response to it as well.
How, how do we stop the sediment from coming in?
So again, this, the reason for this whole study came from the town managers and the town council directing RJ and Chris to look at this, look at the problems with high inundation, sediment, stormwater runoff. So that was the direction from the town council. I think we want to expand it to look at the, at the issue of how the lagoon is used and what's gonna happen going forward if nothing's done. And so all of the suggestions that all of you have made should be looked at in that and see which ones might be feasible and how it gets funded.
I think, I think we're trying to figure, and it's like, when can we expect communication on that ad hoc? Because that's the thing that we're all really liking.
He said he's gonna start about.
We will, we will use this email list and the lagoon maintenance email list. We communicate with everyone and like I said, we'll establish next steps, timing.
The worry isn't that it's gonna get bad, it's bad right now. And I want everybody, everybody here knows that, but I'm, I'm not sure. But hopefully going forward, we're gonna, a group that can focus on this, because this was really a flood control.
Yeah, I'll keep a loom last year, which really.
We need to have a focused media.
You guys probably have visibility on that, but it was, it was pretty scary, gross.
Because the water is warm, because it's shallow.
Right, right, no, I mean, but. Today, you, you hear us.
Okay, I think.
Thank you.
We got along very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. So I think there. Keeping things, things quiet down. Do we want to make any more comments on the Storm Brain Master Plan? I have some comments that I could, can submit by email in regard to this. Or shall we go along with the shoreline at FJ? Well, I was on this too, and I like.
Yeah.
How are you?
We're moving on to the next item.
I'm not the next scientist.
Maybe more scientists?
Well, I'm an engineer, actually.
Um, I'm sorry. Did you hand it to me?
Uh, yes.
Can I keep the hard copy?
You can keep all of it.
Again, great. Okay.
I brought those two. Give out.
Yeah. The one thing we're going to try and do is get it on the same data.
Excellent.
Because that's what's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, bud.
Thank you for your.
Uh, shoreline adaptation.
I know. I have to remember. I, again, not very often in Washington, so.
Chair Bundy, members of the board. As you know, we've had a series of public engagement events around our shoreline adaptation effort. Um, we've had two successful virtual workshops. And, um, we're really getting kind of toward the backend of this process. And want to present, um, another tool we're working on, which is, a video visualization tool. Uh, but for now, we'll also kind of, for anyone who hadn't seen the prior work, we're also going to do a quick recap of some of the work we've done in the last, since, um, October of twenty twenty three. Um, and that'll hand over to Bibi to give us a good introduction here.
All right. Thanks, RJ, and good evening, Chair Bundy and the board members. I'm excited to give you all an update on our shoreline adaptation engagement effort tonight, as well as as RJ has launched this flood visualization video, um, which will also have an online tool. So I'm just going to start by giving a brief overview, which you all are familiar with the effort, but just for anyone who's listening in or watching later, that may not be. And then, as RJ mentioned, um, give an overview of the engagement events we've had so far, some of the feedback we've received and before showing the video and then talking a little bit about next steps and, um, further opportunities to get involved. And you all are pretty familiar, I believe, with the project team. We have an interdepartmental team working on this project that calls on great consultant support from the team at Plan to Place. The goals that we're working towards with this effort are, um, first to share some updated information with shoreline residents, as well as stakeholders like business owners in the area, um, about current and future flood risks, as well as, um, potential adaptation measures. And then we're really focused on listening to the community with this effort and hearing from them about their concerns, their needs, their ideas, um, related to addressing flood risk in the shoreline area. And then the ultimate goal here is to decide as a community on the next steps to address those flood risks. The area that we're focusing on for this effort is shown on the screen here. So it sort of roughly follows the FEMA hundred-year floodplain in this area. So that's including Marina Village, Mariner Cove, um, parts of Marina Estates, and then some commercial areas as well. And, um, this area has been identified as a focus area due to its location in the floodplain. It's a low-lying area and some areas are, as you know, already experiencing flooding impacts. And this area was also identified as a priority to reengage in the twenty twenty one climate adaptation assessment. And so I'll add it back to RJ to talk a little bit more about that effort and the town's previous work in the area.
So this is just a, for those that, um, aren't as familiar, this, these are some of the documents that, um, we're building off of. We had, um, a series of storm, townwide storm drainage flood control studies in the two thousand seven, two thousand eight timeframe. Um, the county, um, did a Marin shoreline sea level rise vulnerability assessment in twenty seventeen. Um, we've also done a Marina Village levee study in two thousand seventeen. And then we worked for two and a half years on a port of area climate adaptation assessment. So this effort really was to reengage after that climate adaptation assessment and really hear out our community, um, you know, in particular, these, these shoreline neighborhoods. And so we've, you know, set up a bunch of engagement events in our last, um, six months to do that. So we started in, um, fall of twenty twenty three. You can see there's a gap in time between the, um, adaptation assessment and kind of our reengagement process. Um, we had several kind of neighborhood workshops and, and various, um, types of, of outreach, some small, some larger, really just trying to kind of hear from everyone in a more intimate way. And we're currently here at this kind of later stage, um, where we're trying to memorialize, you know, the feedback we've heard and kind of what are the next steps in the, um, shoreline adaptation process. So this was discussed at council in October. Um, we kicked it off really with, um, flood board in December. Um, we had these king tide pop-up events.
I'm very sorry. I'm old and I, I was trying to find a bathroom. Can anybody tell me where to?
Uh, over here. At a diagonal in the next building across.
Thank you very much.
Um, so these pop-up events where we actually were there at the high, at the king tides to see kind of water surface level relative to, um, you know, land properties, et cetera, really to understand, you know, our, our level of vulnerability. Um, we also followed up with two virtual workshops, had a lot of good attendance, um, thirty or forty people at each of them. And really just continue to build, um, you know, the overall, you know, things that we're hearing, you know, whether it be goals or whether it begins concerns. We're just summarizing that as we go so we can hear from the community and try to develop a plan that, um, best suits that. Um, here's a screenshot from our summer flood board. Here's some of the king tide pop-ups we're looking at. Um, you know, land elevations and like I said, we, you know, that's after looking at the, the bay elevation. We do this for Mariner Cove and Marina Village. Here's a map that, you know, uses LiDAR data to show, um, the topography and the elevations, um. We've also done some specific surveys to confirm those with, um, you know, highly accurate survey information. And we introduced, um, this visualization tool, um, which showed, uh, used a Cosmos model, which we'll get into, um, to render in what, um, our vulnerabilities are to king tides, um, storm surge and potential sea level rise. And we did this at both Marina Village and Mariner Cove. And ran through scenarios of, like I said, what, what is, you know, what's a common king tide? What is a king tide? If you put a twenty-year storm surge on it, and it really just shows kind of where the water inundates, um, with respect to the land and the properties. And that model, um, would get into, but it doesn't really account for all the inland precipitation and storm drain infrastructure, which is why we had a traveling wheeler here today. Because they're really the other piece to the puzzle, you know, evaluating the, how things behave in storm drain systems, pump stations, and then this is more focused on what are the tides do and what is the potential for future subsidence and future, um, sea level rise and what would that look like?
So as RJ covered, we have these, um, four events so far. And these are sort of the themes that we've been starting to hear come up in residents' comments and questions at these events. And this is by no means meant to be a final summary of feedback. Um, we are moving towards a mailed survey that will be sent out to all addresses in the engagement area and we'll be having additional conversations with council as a sort of wrap-up to this project. But just as a, um, sort of way of getting feedback and sharing back what we have heard so far. Um, these are sort of the five themes that we've been hearing. So many residents in this area, uh, not a surprise, are already impacted by flooding today, whether it's in their backyards, in their garage, or on the streets, on their way to work or school. And residents are concerned about these flooding impacts, as well as the potential for them to get worse in the future with, um, climate impacts and subsidence. And we've also heard a general level of support for addressing these flooding issues. Um, a couple of, um, solutions that have been mentioned by residents are making it easier for residents to raise their home. That's something that our planning department is working on right now by revising the design review regulations. Um, improving storm drain infrastructure, like we've been talking about this evening. Uh, reinforcing the flood berm that is existing and is already protecting Marina Village neighborhood. While as building new flood protection infrastructure, um, which would be some type of flood barrier. And we're using the term flood barrier here as a generic term to talk about a type of flood defense system that prevents water from flowing into neighborhoods. So some examples of, um, vertical flood barriers are levees, seawalls, sheet pile walls and eutone slopes. And we're not suggesting any particular one of those right now. We're just, I've heard feedback related to this type of infrastructure.
And one other thing I just want to emphasize, so when we're talking about tide levels and storm surge, I mean, when tide rises, it's a lot, and the water goes for thousands of miles. So, you know, there are flood barriers sometimes used, um, in other situations, like precipitation situations, you might have pumps that are, and, and drains that might be your flood barrier. But for tides, given the magnitude and, and scale of the amount of water we're, we're really dealing with, it's only feasible to have a vertical feature that can keep the water out.
So with any of these solutions, we've heard from residents that they prefer a phased approach. So focusing on near-term solutions that can be built on in the future, as well as, um, solutions that are really specific to the conditions in each neighborhood. So really specific to Marina Village, Mariner Cove, and even potentially specific conditions in those neighborhoods. And when it comes to those built infrastructure solutions, we have heard some common concerns from residents. And those relate mainly to the costs of these measures and how they'd be funded, uh, potential for obstruction of use or water access for those along the waterfront, as well as a potential impact on property values. So we really appreciate all the feedback we've heard so far and all the residents who have been able to participate. Um, but we also know that we haven't reached the whole community in this, these neighborhoods. So, and that's the, um, what's sort of spurred us to develop this video. And the idea is it's about a seven-minute video. The idea is that it'd be easily shareable, um, easy to digest, short piece, and that we could get the same message about the existing flood, flood vulnerabilities out to the broader community in that area. Um, and really the idea is to create a baseline understanding of what the flood risk is in those neighborhoods before we send out that survey asking for feedback on next steps. So we're going to transition to showing the video now, and I apologize for the switch in laptops. I have to share it from this one. I'll just take a minute to pull that up.
So this video is produced by a company called Virtual Planet. They've done work for Stinson Beach, um, Santa Cruz, they worked with Stanford, many, um, academic institutions. And, um, it's, it's really a powerful visualization tool to really forecast, um, some of the vulnerabilities we have, um, in terms of sea level rise.
RJ Suko, Director of Public Works for the Town of Corder Medera. The video you are about to see was created as part of the Town of Corder Medera's shoreline adaptation engagement effort in spring twenty twenty four to help the community visualize flooding hazards in the shoreline area. The video and companion online tool were developed by Virtual Planet, which has produced similar tools for Stinson Beach, Santa Cruz, and other cities across the country. The visualizations use data from the U.S. Geological Survey's Coastal Storm Modeling System, also known as Cosmos, to show flooding vulnerabilities that exist today from high tides plus storm surge combinations in shoreline neighborhoods and the surrounding area. These visualizations are not a complete picture of the flood risk as they do not model the additional impacts of storm water runoff. We hope you enjoy the video and encourage you to get involved to help shape the future of Corder Medera shoreline.
Welcome to Corder Medera, a community of about ten thousand people nestled between beautiful Mount Tamalpais and the San Francisco Bay. The town is surrounded by marshes, vital ecosystems which support local flora and fauna and provide protection to shoreline neighborhoods by reducing wave impacts. Corder Medera was originally home to the Coast Mewoc people, who have been stewards of the land for thousands of years. The town was incorporated in nineteen sixteen and grew rapidly after World War Two, with multiple new residential subdivisions created by filling in marshlands. Due to their construction over bay mud, these neighborhoods have subsided two to four feet since construction and are continuing to sink as the weight of earth fill, roads, and homes compresses the bay mud and former marsh solids. This low-lying area is vulnerable to flooding due to multiple causes. King tides, the highest tides of the year, often cause streets and backyards to flood in the Mariner Cove neighborhood. Heavy rain events also contribute to flooding, especially when they occur at the same time as high tides, which can prevent storm water from draining to the bay. Over time, land subsidence, also called settlement, and sea level rise are increasing the flood risk that these neighborhoods face. If no action is taken, shoreline neighborhoods such as Mariner Cove and Marina Village will be increasingly vulnerable to flooding over time. This is a three D model of Corder Medera's shoreline neighborhoods. Here you can see the Mariner Cove and Marina Village neighborhoods, which are separated by San Clemente Creek. You can also see Paradise Shopping Center and the Cove Elementary School. U.S. Highway one oh one runs to the west. There are over five hundred homes in these neighborhoods. Here's the area that a hundred-year flood could cover today. This kind of flood has a one percent chance of happening every year or a twenty-six percent chance during a thirty-year mortgage. However, with king tides already flooding some streets, even smaller storms combined with high tides, subsidence, and/or sea level rise could have serious impacts in these neighborhoods. Let's go to a bird's eye view to understand what this means. From this view, you can see Marina Village, which is currently protected by previously constructed flood berms. The lowest known berm elevation is eight point three feet, while many of the streets and properties behind the berms, including portions of Highway one oh one, are at six feet or lower elevation, putting them at risk of flooding if the berms fail or are overtopped. At king tides today, the marshes to the north of Marina Village are filled with water, but the existing berms prevent this water from flowing into the neighborhood. However, if a twenty-year storm surge were to occur during a king tide, the berms overtop, causing the entire area to flood and impacting dozens of homes and businesses, as well as local and regional roads. Even low areas of Highway one oh one would be underwater. Marina Village is vulnerable to this level of flooding today, and the risk is predicted to increase as severe storms and higher tides become more frequent due to our changing climate. Now let's take a look at the Mariner Cove neighborhood. From this view, you can see Mariner Cove and the Cove Elementary School. The Mariner Cove neighborhood sits several feet higher in elevation than Marina Village. And most homes and streets in this area range from eight to eleven feet in elevation. Lower elevations are present along the waterfront, including at the sanitary sewer pump station, which is seven point two feet in elevation at its concrete base. King tides already impact the neighborhood, flooding some streets every year. The water level that we see during a king tide today could become a daily occurrence with one point six feet of relative sea level rise. Adding a twenty-year storm surge event on top of a king tide increases flooding on Golden Hind Passage and nearby streets. A hundred-year storm surge would result in even more flooding in the area. So what can we do to protect Corder Medera's shoreline from these scenarios? Let's explore some adaptation strategies. Elevating homes can limit property damage from intermittent flooding that may occur in these neighborhoods. This adaptation strategy is already happening in Mariner Cove and Marina Village, usually during major renovations of existing residences. Upgrading our storm drain infrastructure is an adaptation strategy that can help mitigate flooding by efficiently carrying stormwater runoff out of these neighborhoods. Upgrades and improvements are being studied by the town as part of the storm drain master plan update. Another adaptation strategy could involve boosting our existing flood defenses, like reinforcing and raising the existing flood berm that shields Marina Village. The town is committed to working with residents and other stakeholders impacted by flooding to develop a community vision for shoreline adaptation. Starting in fall twenty twenty three, the town initiated a community engagement project called the Shoreline Adaptation Engagement Effort to provide information about current and future flood vulnerabilities and listen to the ideas, hopes. concerns, and needs of all shoreline residents and stakeholders. Join us to work together to build a resilient and sustainable future for our community. Visit our website to learn more and get involved. Thank you for watching the Shoreline Flood Explorer: Corder Madera.
Voice on that is much better.
Better than the AI draft.
Yeah, the AI draft.
So really, we're just providing an update on where we are in the engagement process. We open it to any comments or feedback. Really, we'll be publicizing this video more widespread in the coming week or so, hopefully.
Yeah, so for the next couple of weeks, we'll really be focused on pushing out the video. There's also going to be an online web version, which is personally not quite ready yet, but that will be up on our website, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. And that'll just allow you to walk through some of the scenarios that are shown in the video on your own time and then spend more time looking at them. We'll also have a VR version of that, so we haven't quite figured out how to disseminate that. We only have one headset, but if any of you are interested, you're welcome to schedule a time to come in and check that out. And so we'll be focused on pushing out the video for the next couple of weeks. We do have two office hours that are scheduled, just to answer any questions that might come up about the video. And so I'll just pull that up and show when those next dates are. So we have the office hours coming up on Wednesday, May 8th, from 12 to 1, and then Friday, May 17th, 12 to 1, and those will be on Zoom. And just to answer any questions that residents might have while watching that video. And then, as we mentioned, we are moving towards that survey that will be mailed out to all residents, and hopefully towards the end of May. And then we'll be wrapping up by bringing all of that information that we've heard from residents to council for discussion. We don't have a date set for that, but looking at July, August dates. So we'll be sharing that information when we have it scheduled through our email list. If anyone's not on it, you can sign up by going to our website or scanning the QR code here.
Do we have anybody in the audience that has questions in regard to this aspect of the presentation?
I have one question. You because my wife's been nagging me for the last 10 years that we should sell our house while it still has value before the seas rise anymore. Do you think that somewhere down the line, we're going to be looking at a dike that goes from Paradise Point to the to the ferry terminal to stop the water? What is the long term solution?
There is a dike there now. It's incomplete as you go further north to the county property and Larkspur. But the railroad, the old railroad right away is the levee that has protected 101, you know, the shopping centers and really the Madera Gardens, the low line there is from tidal flooding. And that, as was shown on this, there's one portion of the levee that is particularly low and puts Marina Village at risk. But as with subsidence, settlement, you know, these need to be maintained. And I always think that having the town with a plan for dealing with this to prevent flooding maintains the value of our homes.
Where is the southern end of that dike?
Oh, okay. Oh, the southern end, yeah. It comes down to Marina Village and then it stops.
Thank you.
Mariner Cove was, instead of being built at a lower elevation with a berm around it, it was built at a higher elevation with no berm. That's a different approach to that subdivision.
And then we had the the Storm Drain Master Plan draft presented, and that was the third piece of the puzzle that the town and then we need to figure out the very beginning of the conversation you're asking about. You need to know how much water is going to come down in a storm, because if you do have some sort of levee, you need to know how they can pump start to pump it out. You need to understand the subsidence in the neighborhood, and you need to understand the future sea level projections. So finally, we have the three legs of the stool to put those together and figure out what you would have to do to protect the entirety of the Corder Madera Larkspur coast. So we're just at the beginning of asking those questions.
Okay, thanks.
So we do have.
Anybody online?
We do.
Oh, wait.
So one thing I've noticed also is that there's a lot of silt that build up in the Corder Madera Creek, which, you know, when the tide is out.
The Corder Madera Creek or?
Corder Madera Creek.
Of course, you know, that's Larkspur and the Ross Valley Flood District.
Okay.
And we actually, we do discharge into that. But I don't think we have any control over that at all. That's all that Ross Valley Flood District.
Small sliver right opposite our courtyard on Lake Drive.
Okay, so it's across the street, but it might be relevant. Like, is anybody talking about dredging that to create more area of volume?
So, yeah, I think it's a fair question. And I'm happy to share some materials from previous workshops we did. When it comes to like sea level rise, you know, we really need that vertical feature to keep tides out. Dredging, it just offsets volume, but because the ocean is so, you know, close to limitless, it really doesn't. Dredging isn't really a good method of getting the sea over rise.
All right, so we have Suzie first online. Suzie, I'd allow you to speak. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, because it's kind of a strange Zoom situation here, but that's great. You can hear me. Thank you. I just want to say that I think maybe the NRGs can help disseminate that video in Mariner Cove. You know, we've got access to pretty much everybody here. So we could get it out to the block captains if you'd like, I think, if people aren't going to freak out about it. You know. But anyway, if you want something like that done, you can be in touch with me. Be happy to help.
Absolutely, Suzie. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, good idea. Suzie will show it at the next, at the NRG meeting this weekend.
Oh, at my house?
Yes.
Well, we could, you know, we probably could.
Have a captive audience.
Yeah. Good meeting you guys tonight. Difficult, I know. Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Suzie. Okay, next we have Roy. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening again. Nice film on the shoreline. Just let's work through the math a bit here. So one point was that there's going to, you know, there's going to be maybe 1.6 relative, good point, it's relative, water rise, land sinking, 1.6 feet, okay? We look at the number of inches, that's 19.2 inches. I'm just doing the math. The Alameda Tide Gauge or Water Level Gauge, that's in San Francisco Bay. If you look at NOAA and they have an interactive chart, it shows that the annual level, sea level rise or the water level rise in San Francisco Bay is 0.92 millimeters. So let's just make that one millimeter, okay? The number of millimeters in an inch is 25.4. So if we multiply 25.4 times 19.2 inches, that's 488, we'll just say 488 millimeters. You divide one millimeter into 488, that's the annual. It's going to take 488 years for the water level to rise 1.6 feet. So that's my point about using in that other study and all these other things. That's why, you know, we're, oh, we're going to, we're going to use some theories and that sort of thing and projections. We need to look at what the actual measurements are here happening in the Bay Area. And the same thing with the rainfall and stuff, when the one report that was done looks like really good detailed data, but when it comes to, you know, I don't know if we're trying to justify it or not, and I don't think we have to justify it per se because we know we're subject to flooding. But why the hyperbole about sea level rise and water and storms getting worse? The actual data doesn't show that, at least not in this area. So I just ask that we look at the real math and I'm all, I'm just doing math, that's all, science and math, that's it. If we don't want the math, don't even use it. But I think we need it. So that's my comment is that, yeah, we could rise 1.6 feet in water level, but we're not going to be around. Anyway, thank you for listening. Good night.
Thank you. Nathan, I know that you had some recent information on that, that was just released as far as projected sea level rise.
Yeah, I'd only agree with Roy that we want to have a common understanding of both the rate of subsidence and future sea level rise. And I think the town has done that. We had the AN West document from 2007 that showed subsidence, which is our go to. We have some new LiDAR data that we can ground truth back with. And then we have the 2024 California Sea Level Rise Guidance, which is the official policy of the town to use that guidance. Within that guidance, there are multiple probabilities of sea level rise. So the real question is, are you using their low end or their high end? But we do have specific numbers that give a range of sea level rise scenarios for the future. And I'm always looking at those to see whether I agree with them technically, and with those documents, I do with it. It's just a matter of which of those scenarios you choose. And so we just want to disseminate that to the town and the public, and so everybody's on the same page of what you might be building such a vertical structure to in the future.
Yeah, and so, yeah, Roy's been giving a lot of feedback for years now. And it's made me think, so thank you, Roy, to really kind of get to how to explain what's going on. But so we took this COSMOS model, which looks at the bay, factors in wind tides, major creek runoff, and it says in a one, so, and it's based on mean high water, which is, getting my numbers right again, 5.8. So basically, we've distilled it down to if you had a king tide occur at the same time as a 20 year storm today, forget future sea level rise, forget future subsidence, we would have a breach of our levee that would carry all the across. So, you know, we can all agree or disagree on what the projections could and will be. What I'm trying to say is that even without it, we still are vulnerable.
Yeah, you're saying, Corder Madera, we have a problem that.
We have risk, you know, I'm not gonna, you know, it's, I mean, it did happen in the 80s, you know, we've since added a lot of flood control infrastructure. But yeah, if you believe that a serious event could occur at the same time as a king tide, then yeah. And then we had, we had a close one, I think, what was it?
2021.
2021.
October.
We had a 6.5 predicted tide with
a foot, I think, rumble.
Almost a 10 year storm.
Yeah, it was, I think, seven foot observed.
Yeah. So, you know, we were fortunate, it didn't tip our berm, but it was close.
No, I agree with RJ that we've gotten lucky because there's, I've looked at a lot of tide data and it's not unusual for actual tides to be two feet higher than the
Predicted.
Predicted tide. And if the predicted is seven, we're going to get a, luckily, it's never happened. But we have the potential for stuff that's much, much larger than we've seen if the moon and the earth and the storms all line up on the same day.
So we have another, you know, there's somebody else.
More of a comment, it looks like?
Yeah, so Sandy, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. First of all, thank you for this. And I appreciate the community involvement that you've had. I am at 263 Golden Hind. I'm right in the middle of your, of your map there with the where, you know, right, right, right in the middle of the potential vulnerability of tidal surge per se. I've lived here for 15 years. I have to say that I've never had water in my backyard. I've only had water in my gutter, in my street. And one of the issues that we're finding recently is that the neighborhood has been very motivated on their own to go and do house rises. And they're being forced through code to redirect sump pumps towards the street rather than pumping their groundwater or their the term I'm looking for, the water table, water that, that potentially is under their house, redirecting that into the street. And we've had flooding on Golden Hind from people's sump pumps that are continually running when we have a high tide versus being able to pump this water out, which is basically sea water or rainwater back out into the bay. And I understand that that might be a BCDC issue, what have you, but it is, it's changed Golden Hind in the last, I'd say, year because of the people that have been doing work on their houses and they're having code reinforce the redirection of their sump pumps. That's, that's one, one issue that I just wanted to raise. Second, our neighborhood is very motivated to alleviate any sort of discussion around, obviously, around a seawall. Because where we live, we have access to the water. Many of us have boats, some of us have docks. And we want to preserve that. So a lot of people have been investing in their own homes and properties by reinforcing their seawalls and going ahead with lifts on their own. I think one, one way of assistance we could use from the town to really buy in with this on this is that, first off, we're trying to create a uniform seawall among our neighborhood that would alleviate the need for any sort of levee. And the problem is that anything in our backyard that touches the water, we can't really do anything with. We can't pour cement, we can't, you know, under code, do some of the things that we could do as residents to form a unified seawall that would protect our homes and still make it the properties that we invested in. So I'm throwing that out there. I don't know what the, I don't know what the, the solution is. But we all want the same thing. We want to protect our properties. And many of us all have a continuous seawall right now that spans, I think, seven or eight houses right in the most vulnerable area with no gaps between it. But we can't go higher and we can't reinforce that due to issues with BCDC. We'd love to be able to raise our walls, make them thicker, what have you. So that's one other, one other item. And then I do appreciate the fact that the planning department is looking to streamline the process for approvals for house lifts and to be able to streamline through the design review process. That's very helpful. I hope we see that happen. I think that, like I said, a lot of people on our street want to invest in our properties and are willing to do so in a, in a more homogeneous way rather than putting a wall in front of our homes that wasn't there before. And we know what happened, you know, a year ago when that was raised. There are a lot of angry people. And I think that there are more resident friendly ways to go about the solution, and we all want to be part of it. And we're willing to invest more in our properties, but there are some, there is some red tape that's, that's sometimes difficult. So those are my comments. I don't, I just want to put that out there that, like I said, we, we want to, we want to protect our neighborhood and, and do what we can as neighbors and try to alleviate a more drastic situation.
Thank you, Sandy.
Any other comments?
Any more comments?
I had a couple of questions.
I was just going to close.
Oh, yeah, probably.
And then, yeah, again.
So a couple of questions about just the distribution of the mailed surveys, that probably that, that area that you showed then?
Yes, so we have the addresses.
Yeah, within that, I saw the Marona Estates and Paradise Shopping Center. How have people responded from those areas? How, how have people responded from those areas, particularly in Mariner Estates?
We've had a couple of people I've recognized and some of our.
Okay, so some like the top of, those are people coming from, right?
And we've actually had some people from the Dairy Gardens.
Yeah, okay.
Folks.
No, that's right.
So I mean, I don't, on our end, we want really to cast the widest amount we can. I mean, that's, we're here, you know, trying to put together the priorities for our town.
Yeah, well, I also think like the results from the Storm Drain Master Plan, right? Really, you know, Mariner Estates, big red light, so to speak, right? So it would might be behoove us to just make sure that they're aware. Because that, I think it's a little bit of a hidden area, like I was a little surprised to see that because I know, I know my backyard and I know what I experienced. But not realizing that the constraints that are downstream of them, right, impact the fact that they can't get rid of the water fast enough, right?
So San Comedy Pump Station is our largest pump station. And even so, it's higher list to upgrade.
Right, for that purpose, right?
For Mariner Estates.
Yeah, I think it would be, I mean, I just, I think people should know that they're at risk, maybe. Because they in like 100-year buck flight, I think.
It's Little Valley.
They are, okay, all right, because they're on that kind of, that whatever, that drainage, okay.
The only thing I was also going to respond to in, in some of Sandy's comments, and thank you, Sandy, for providing feedback. You know, Nathan talked about kind of the missing piece of puzzle, the last leg of the stool. I mean, so we're interested in coming up with strategies that will solve these and, and basically account for everything, right? So we don't want to build a pump station, but then 10 years from now, the water level gets so high that it's pumping water circles. We want to be able to invest in a project that can effectively keep the tidal waters out and also pump the rainwater out. So that's, I think, you know, one of my goals is to break, you know, that complete project. And so we're looking for your feedback on, on what those goals are and how we can prioritize that.
Just, just like, just, you know, related to, I think, I think Chef and Will did a great job with the Storm Drain Master with kind of inside, so to speak, the fence, right? And it seems like a next phase is to, you know, kind of look at relatively small geographic areas and try to kind of package what the inside defense priorities might be with the, the climate. Because they, they said, hey, we're, that's not really in our scope to look at and we need to. That's, I think, what the climate adaptation would study next phase is to like start focusing in on that so that when we invest in a storm drain, as you say, we're also investing in the larger sea level rise solution, or at least know what we're planning for that, even though that may lag by five, 10 years, depending what the permit is, right?
So a lot of the, yeah, all the sea lower rise science or approach is, is often talk about pathways. And so, you know, what point in time do you need to build certain types of infrastructure to basically stay ahead of it? And so that really is a driver for how we set our priorities. And from the work we've done on these two neighborhoods, Marina Village and Maricopa, Marina Village, even though it has an existing levee, is more vulnerable to lower elevations and really does also have pretty more substantial affected area. And we're talking potentially Howie 101 and all the way over to Town Center. So we have applied for a FEMA grant for the design of that project. That was submitted earlier this year and we're hoping to hear maybe July or so. And then, you know, as we go down this kind of, what's the next project? Yeah, I mean, it's basically, that's, that's how we would plan it out, yeah.
It is Caltrans. Has there been any coordination with Caltrans on, you know, what are, is it potentially impacted? Is there any interest?
I think if we were to be unsuccessful in this grant and we continue to go for more, we would reach out and try and get local letters of support, especially if they're state-funded or federally funded. But at this point, they're, they're aware of our document. We haven't had a lot of direct coordination on this specifically. So, but I think, you know, there will come a time where that will, you know, be important.
And do you have a sense for, I know the county got money, right, to do some more, like another level of study? Is that, how is that, is there any interface there?
So there, I know they're looking at, for Stinson, so they're looking at governance.
Right, okay.
And then separately, for their Stinson Beach, they're.
So that's a few focus areas.
Adaptation.
Okay.
But I actually think in a lot of ways, we are at or potentially beyond them in terms of what we know about our system. So we're really, will be, the, one of the questions that we're trying to answer is, you know, should we make the next step and really go into like preliminary design for, say, a Marina Village project, which we know has already vulnerabilities that could be for.
Right.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll keep it short. I just wanted to comment that I went to my first outreach for your time, RJ. It was December 16 at the Cove School. Your predecessor did this and had a very similar type of program than the one that you guys are talking about today. That's how I learned about all these issues and got involved. We're now, eight years later, now a lot has happened in those eight years. One thing that happened is there was some feedback about not enough outreach. You guys have blown that away. You guys are, you're providing outreach into the community on this issue beyond what we have seen since I've been in the area. I'm sure you guys would feel the same. There's been a lot of communication, which is great. But because there are present risks, I think we owe it to the community to tell them what we intend to do. I know the FEMA grant that you just raised, that's the first time I heard of it. But the people who live in that community are probably really interested to know. We're doing a lot of outreach, but what is the plan?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good point. So what we've learned is we want to be kind of step by step with the community. Because when we did the climate adaptation assessment years ago, you know, we took a lot of criticism for moving down that path too fast into solutions. Really, we need, that's why we're using these terms, you know, flood barriers. Because, you know, we know that we need to increase our protection level. But we need to study what are the astronomical, what are, you know, what are our goals in terms of green and sustainable? Which ones are going to have more or less privacy? So basically, like create a matrix of goals and then run the different options through that matrix to really help us make that decision. So, yeah, and, and that would be part of that next process.
Like what you said, where you were saying, regardless of how we all look at the future numbers and the studies and reports and modeling today is, is a concern. So let's fight the issue today without getting bottlenecked on what the future will, will hold. The one other subsequent comment I had is when we're doing the tidal issues, what is the thought process for the water table? Because you can't really just do a shallow seawall and prevent a rising water table. And that's going to affect anybody that's going to be low lying anyway.
So we do, we have established some groundwater monitoring. That's certainly a, a, a subject that is, you know, being, you know, studied pretty significantly nationally. Luckily, we're, we're not in Florida, which is mostly sand because they just can't do it. The water goes under now. So bay mud is not great because it subsides. But in terms of permeability, it doesn't let a lot of water through. So that for California is a good thing in terms of sea level rise. But it's certainly, you know, there will come a point where you can only, you know, build your protection so much for, you know, the subsurface water becomes surface water.
Thank you. Nathan, you have any comments, further comments?
No, I guess.
David?
No, I'm, I'm glad you're doing the mailing and agree. That's a tremendous improvement for outreach. And then I'm sure you've heard it, thinking down the road, when I talk to neighbors, they're like, it's great, you know, build a levee, but who's going to pay for it? I'm not paying for it, so. So I'm glad to hear about the grants. That'd be a great information. Get ahead of that curve. That's all.
Yeah, I think this was really good. As Sachi was saying, you know, getting the small groups together that are impacted, whether it's the people on the lagoon or on Golden Hind that are experiencing the flooding that we see now around that Eptid pump station to see what type of barrier, you know, that they would be willing to accept. And then use that as phase one. And so Sandy and others that live on higher elevations along Golden Hind, we may have to face seawall, you know, 30, 50 years from now, but probably not in the foreseeable future unless sea level rise is much faster than we anticipate. But let's, let's do something where there's currently flooding. And as I understood the, the stormwater plan, the idea was to put a, a pump station, a stormwater pump station with the sanitary pump station at Eptid and Golden Hind. Is that correct?
Yeah, they do envision a storm drain pump station in the area. In tandem with, you know, they, they basically just said, there's a boundary condition. We're going to assume that water's not coming in.
Yeah, and see, you would have to have.
What's happening on the climate adaptation front and that's something we need to solve. But as part of that, we also need to implement.
Agreed. The, the other thing that I thought when looking at that area is, and Roy talks a lot about subsidence. And you can really become a believer in subsidence when you look at that pump station. You know, because the weight of that has pulled the street down, the catch basin down, you know, the houses down that were beside it. And, you know, that may, may well continue. And if we're going to do something, if we are able to do something such as a barrier of some kind to prevent the tide from coming in, maybe that would also be the time to deconstruct that pump station and rebuild it on pilings so that it wouldn't sink further. Again, I know it's, it's bay mud is deep there, but not as deep as it is further out. And, you know, that would stabilize that area going forward. Otherwise, I think we're going to have more problems with that. You know, I think we probably have a lot of problems with it in regard to the, the sea beach that occurs just because of the drainage pipe, gravity drainage pipe that's through there, you know, as well as the sanitary sewer line. And this, in thinking about doing something there, that might be something we should consider to prevent future problems there and get the whole level, the whole area, you know, up. So there aren't some of the problems with the, well, the rainwater street ponding as we have now.
Yeah, when we do open cut, whether it's storm drain or sewer pipelines, we often use lightweight fill when we're in those.
But I mean, there's just so much weight there with that concrete pad already. I don't know how thick it is. But, you know, you just, you just look at that, how much settlement, how that street just dips down to the pump station and that catch basin right there. So, I mean, the only way to really, you know, stop that would be rebuild it on pilings. So that, that, and I think we really want to emphasize the phased approach so that residents that are on the shore, that on the bay, that haven't, haven't seen, you know, tidal flooding, you know, aren't feeling that they're at risk at this time for some kind of seawall that they would have to deal with or would block their access to the bay. And 20, 30, 40 years from now, when that may be necessary, then whoever's living there will deal with it at that time.
Yeah, so and, and we, and I think you're absolutely right. We put a lot of positive feedback on phase approach. And so it's building something that could then be added to later. So we don't have a, you know.
Exactly.
Cost by building it twice. We're building half of it now and then we'll come back, we'll build the other half.
Yeah, exactly. I agree. Okay. Excellent meeting. A lot gone over, a lot of participation.
I'd like to say one more thing. I think the town has done some very good work on flood control since I moved to Corredamadera. The pumps that are now in Lagoon One and the pumps that are at the end of High Canal make us much more comfortable than when we had to rely on low tide and gates and such.
Yeah.
So I do appreciate the, the work that has been done.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, that High Canal pump station has been something that has really saved, you know, the Madera Gardens from that standpoint. Because it's no longer, you know, dependent on this tidal drainage against a high tide. And that, that does, I think, 90, 95% of the flood protection for Madera Gardens and the residents of the lagoons.
Very, very effective. And also, I, for one, I do appreciate the urgency of what's going on in East Corredamadera. And I think what freaked all of us out on Lagoon One was just that blanket statement, there will be no dredging for 10 years. I mean, that's a long time before anything happens. I just wanted to say.
Got you. Understand.
Let's see when it's supposed to happen 35 years ago. I voted for it.
Anything for future agenda items?
Yeah, do you have any items?
I think our hands fall. We're dealing with what we've gone through tonight.
We've got material.
Okay.